Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, we'll call to order our council work session. The bathroom is February twenty fifth, Tuesday at one o'clock. And we will.
Thank you, Margaret.
George Handley.
Eric Garrett.
Craig Christensen.
Patrice McKay.
Great, thank you. Although this is a public.
That's.
Meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions. Unless otherwise invited by the chair, please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to use the microphone so the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear. Please let aside conversations as they are easily picked up. We, we were given three sets of minutes to review the December third council meeting minutes, January fourteenth council meeting minutes. And the February eleventh work session minutes. Are there any objections or requested changes for these minutes?
No.
If not, we will declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. First on the agenda, we have a monthly report regarding ADU enforcement by Scott Johnson, our zoning administrator.
All right, good afternoon, council, thank you for this opportunity to come back again and talk more about ADU enforcement in the city. And so really quick. Just kind of a recap of where we ended with last year, we had forty two cases that revolved around potential ADU enforcement that were still outstanding after December of twenty twenty four throughout the month of January. We were able to get some headway on a few of them, some were still investigating, but here's a list of where, where things are now. Twelve of them are still under investigation. Four of them, we were able to get notices of violation sent out. Uh, seven of those have active RDL applications that are being reviewed. Not all of them are ADU applications because not all of them meet the ADU qualifications. So some of them are single family rental license applications. That we're working with the owners to make sure that they're not trying to have an illegal ADU with their single family dwelling license. Application that they're, they're going through. Um, we have four cases that we are working with the owner on um getting them into compliance. We've previously in previous months sent notices of violations on those and they've been working with us in good faith to come into compliance. And so we're still working with them on those. Uh, four cases have been sent to legal for review. Uh, one owner had gone to court during January and entered into a clean advance, essentially going on probation for the next year. And then ten cases in total were, were closed or resolved. And that's of cases that were still outstanding in twenty twenty four.
For the one entry order into a V A, what was that?
I will get that to you, I don't have that off, well.
What do you think is your biggest hurdle with investigation?
Um, our, our biggest hurdle is getting that initial verification of the, of the violation. Um, so an example I, I plan on talking about was um, one of the cases that was closed as resolved. The, the case was opened in February of twenty twenty four. Uh, we went out knocking the door multiple times throughout months and finally in October of twenty twenty four, we were able to verify that the violation existed. Um, I'm talking with my staff of different tactics and techniques, trying to figure out how we can get past that, that long timeframe of being able to actually verify. And I've actually set a deadline, if we, if we haven't said a notice, sent a notice of violation within three months and you've been investigating, let's talk so we can see what we're missing, what we need to do differently to be able to get a resolution to the case, or at least get some traction to get the case moved along the process.
Yeah, like I wonder if at like the month mark and Brian would maybe you could weigh on this. If maybe the three month mark, if we have this information from resident, from neighbor and other people for the online stuff that we could just assume and, you know, send out a letter that you need to prove that it's not otherwise your own violation.
I don't know if Brian wants to respond so me, but.
Well, I mean, we can. We can send out the letter. Trying to decide if I want to say this on the record for somebody to listen, I mean, we can send out the letter. At the ultimate, at the end of the day, we ultimately cannot shift the burden of proof to them i- i- in either a criminal or a civil community. We, we at the end of the day will have to be able to prove it. So we can, we can send out the letter and see if it has an impact, but if they choose to ignore it, it won't, it doesn't actually shift the burden.
I mean, can't start penalizing them until the level of, would you then agree at all?
Well, no, I mean, a- again, like same kind of thing, we can start, so for instance, we could. We could take, we could assemble enough, it's, it's kind of like, I mean, you know, think about another criminal case, right? And I often do this all the time where they need to have um probable cause to believe that a crime has been committed. That doesn't mean they need to have proof beyond a reasonable doubt in order to file charges. But the person never suffers any penalty until they actually get to court and their guilt is proven beyond a reasonable doubt. So, so we can send the letter, we can say, we're going to start fining you, we can start sending them bills. Um, you know, every thirty days we could start sending them, this is the amount of fine that you've accrued. And if they choose to pay them, great, but if at any point they say, I'm not going to pay that until you have a court order that says I have to pay it. When we are in court, we will have to prove, the burden will be on us to prove the violation.
Thank you.
And, and that's been my ultimate vision for any case. No matter what the violation is, my, what I'm looking at is the end results. Either they come into compliance or they're going to fight us tooth and nail. And if they're fighting us tooth and nail, we have to have the evidence to be able to take to court to back up what, what we're doing.
Right, can't you bring them into court and then use the discovery process to get the information that you need?
Well, not in criminal court, there's no discovery in, there's no discovery in criminal court because of the.
Just do civil litigation, Brian.
It's the, it's pesky Fifth Amendment.
Civil fights as well as criminal fights?
But in the civil fines, if we, if we took a particular case down the civil route instead, then we could use discovery during civil process, right? So, so yeah, I, I think it's important for us to be aware of the level of proof that we need to prove the case. In my view, it is not necessary to have that level of proof before we start doing anything. We, but we do need to, but we have an ethical duty to not start doing anything unless we actually believe that the violation exists. So, so it's kind of this middle ground, again, police, police have the same thing, right? They, they're not supposed to be citing people or issuing summons just because somebody said my neighbor did this, right? They have to do enough of an investigation that they have a belief that the crime was actually committed, but once they have that level of belief, they can file charges and we can go down the road and like, you know, Scott and I've had this, this conversation before. I, I don't know that it necessarily is a bad thing if we lose some of these. I think in some ways it's better to be more aggressive about starting them and lose some than less aggressive about starting them in order to win them all.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Agreed. And.
Well, I was gonna say, on the one that you were doing from January, February till October, was it just that you weren't able to talk to anyone at the residence or?
That's, that's what the notes re- reflect is that we've been out there multiple times and nobody answered the door, finally somebody answered the door in October, so we were able to verify and they were very forthright with what was going on at the property. So we were able to verify there were violations and started the enforcement process. And the owners worked very well with this to, to come into compliance.
Is that a matter of your enforcement officers' work hours? Do not line up with the times when people are likely to be at home?
I don't know if that's necessarily the case because they found him during work hours one day. Um, I, I think to some point, it's the um being vigilant at being out there potentially multiple times a day or being out there. And this is something I've talked with my staff about, sitting at the house in your car, you know, in the, in the work vehicle, seeing if there's somebody coming and going, and when you see someone come or go, step out and say, hey, we, we have a question for you. Rather than just go knock on the door, nobody answered, go away, and then maybe a week later come and do it again. You know, being, being more vigilant on, on a regular basis and spending more time doing the investigation.
Scott, I, I look at this and I see people work and our staff go home and stuff. Does that make it more? It doesn't make it harder for the, for the staff to go out there and try to prove something when they're knocking on doors in nobody's home because they're at work day after day after day. And I mean, they're not working on the weekends, they're not working after hours.
At times, I'm sure that plays a factor into it. Um, if there's ever an instance where we need to check something in the evening, like sign brightness, I've had, you know, complaints about signs that are bright and it is an evening requirement. And so that requires most of the time staff to come, check it in the evening outside of work hours. I work with my staff to make sure that they have that flexibility within their schedule to, to go and do that. Um, there've been some occasions where we've had staff members come in in the weekend on a Friday or Saturday to do some work that they feel is able to, you know, catch what's going on rather than during the week because of the nature of what their complaint is, that no, yeah, they're, they're not doing anything during the week, it's on the weekend. So there's, there's occasional times where, where we've needed that, I think on a, on an ongoing basis. Um, you know, the vast majority of our, our cases were able to investigate and verify throughout the workday. But I'm, I'm happy if there's instances where there's a need to investigate outside of the, our standard hours, um, to work with my staff to, to get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Scott, I think you've got about four more slides, let's make sure we can get through those.
Okay, I, I can do that.
Questions.
Okay, um, so the next slide is what the new cases um came in through Janu- through the month of January of twenty twenty five. So we received eighteen new cases and I know this is a metric that has been asked before, so I wanted to make sure with our new city view system, we're, we're able to capture a little bit better where the complaint is coming from. Whether it's a citizen complaint or whether it's staff initiated complaint. Um, seventeen of those eighteen new cases came from complaints from the community. Uh, one of those was a code enforcement officer. Uh, we were doing a standard rental dwelling license inspection for a single family dwelling and noticed that, hey, you've got this basement that's being rented out as well. Let's open a case and start enforcing on that and we're not going to prove your license until that's resolved. So that's, that's what that case specifically is, is regarding. And a- along with that, um, something that we are working on currently is gathering data. I know we've had conversations in the past about um getting county data, cross referencing it with city data and seeing if there are properties that appear to be potentially rented and don't have a license. Um, we've gathered a fair amount of data from the county, we're working on cleaning it up and analyzing it, verifying it with our system to see what properties we could send a a broad swath of letters out to property owners saying, look, we, we think you might be renting, you need to get a license and here's how to do it. So that's something in the works that will, I imagine, have a, a large boost to that number of, of city staff and open cases um in the near future.
Scott, quick question.
Yes.
Uh, in addition to city, uh, how about like uh Provo Power, any other sources you're finding that, that we can also access for that?
Yeah, I mean, Provo Power, that's a, a city resource, so we could absolutely look into the, the utilities as well.
On that yet?
We, we haven't yet, um, there's thousands of properties, addresses that we have where the mailing address is different from the, the property address itself. And analyzing whether it's a commercial property or a residential property, trying to figure that out and organize everything and normalize it so that we can cross reference it with our system.
So ju- just so I'm clear, so are you in the formulative, trying to figure out how to actually access the data set? Or are you actually in the process of utilizing that data set or like where are you in that process?
So we're cleaning up the data set so we can cross reference it with the city data.
Okay, so you've already got it.
Yes, yeah, we have the data from the county, um, and we're just cleaning it up and.
The county, but how about like Provo City, Provo Power?
Oh, so power and utilities, we haven't gathered that yet, that'll be, that should be a very quick thing that we can, we can get down with our I S team.
That's very encouraging.
Yeah. So cases, this are, these are the new cases in January, uh, where they come from, um, in each neighborhood to see Provo Bay actually won this month. Um, the number of cases that came in, I don't know if it's a competition. I, I found it interesting that they, they had a higher number of cases that came through than, than historically other neighborhoods. And then new rental licenses specifically for ADUs, we only received five in the month of January, which is an interesting point. Um, I, I don't know if I have an understanding as to why only five, other than a lot, a lot of them that we're enforcing on don't meet the qualifications. And so they, they wouldn't be applying for an ADU license type.
Are, I, I thought none were allowed or no.
Yeah, so any that are not allowed are being denied. But this is just to show, these are where the applications came from, that, in these neighborhoods. If, if it's not in a neighborhood that's allowed, they would definitely be denied.
Um, I've had a couple, we, I've said in the past, but a couple residents who were so frustrated by certain things, they're like, hey, you put cameras in my yard, we'll record everything. You know, help you get that evidence, they write, people was going to the basement or the number of cars or the number of people staying overnight, that kind of thing. But they said that they didn't want to take it up on that offer, is that something that we are currently able to do? Or is it something that we aren't able to do?
We, we certainly can, the question comes to when we get to court, you know, who's going to testify to what and then who's willing to, and it, and absolutely, so to the point of, I'm willing to put cameras up in my yard to get this information, I haven't heard that specifically.
They.
Well, maybe I misunderstood your question because that's all I, what I thought you were saying is that neighbors have said that.
I thought.
You, you're, you're saying that they're willing for the city to put them on.
Yeah, and they said that they, they gave you permission, but then it never happened, so, but, so I just need to know like how that system works, is it them doing it or you doing it?
We've done it before, but it's usually been in conjunction with police on, I just wondered, like, I don't think that, I don't think they have, I don't think they have very many cameras. I think it's a resource issue.
Yeah, I, I remember we have talked with the police in the past about a particular property that, that is a concern. That, um, yeah, the, there, there were a couple of questions and concerns, one was visibility of the property and what's where we could get a camera and get permission to do it, um, that would work. So, yeah, I.
Normally you don't do that, it's in conjunction with police and it's from where, where are you surfacing?
Typically, yes.
But with that being said, I mean, everybody's got a Ring doorbell camera anymore. You guys allow that kind of footage, like if my neighbor across the street and they have camera footage of people going in and out?
Yeah.
Is that enough to submit for evidence?
Absolutely, any information somebody wants to provide us, we will happily look at it and, and analyze it for its usability in our case. Yeah, I think this is the last one, just I plan on keeping just a, a log of by month, how far, you know, what, not how far, but which cases are being sent over to the attorney's office versus going to um actual being in court and having charges filed. Um, so far in January, we had three that had letters sent out from the attorney and one was uh filed in, in court. So, and I think that's the end of my presentation. Any other questions or are we out of time?
We're, we're fine.
Okay, what quick question, so when you get a new complaint, what is, what are the steps that your code enforcement officer follows? Like, does he like take the address and start by looking at the county records to see what kind of property is? Does he do a Google search to see if there are any rental listings associated with it, like what, what does he do?
Yeah.
Or do you do, sorry?
So the, the typical um actions is first to contact the complainant to see what information that may not have been involved in the written complaint, um, to gather as much information as they can. And then, yes, investigate, look at county records, see who the owners are. Um, they absolutely do Google searches on occasion to see if there's any rental advertisements, if that's the concern. Look at the history of the property, if there's been a history of complaints and violations, if we sent notices in the past. How recently has that been, is it the, with the same owner or is it with a different owner? Um, because that all plays into what ta- what tactic or what path we're going to go down with our enforcement.
And so as they do this, are they creating like a little file that says, okay, I checked county records? This is listed as a single family home or like are, what kind of documentation are they creating in their investigation?
So we, we do have a, a note system or a, a, a field within city view, it's our, our record um system where we can keep notes and we can attach any documents that are, are helpful. Some officers are better than others at notating the details of their investigation. That's something I'm, I, I am talking very regularly with my staff about making sure your notes are clear because when we send it over to our attorney to review the case, there are times where they say, well, I don't see the information here that really proves the elements of the case, so you need to do more investigation and they come back and say, well, I, I did all this, well, then put it in your notes. So, so yes, there's a way to notate what's going on and I'm working with my staff to make sure that they're doing a sufficient job so that we can prevail in court if, if necessary.
Any other questions for Scott? Great, thank you, Scott, thank you for the presentation. See you again next month. Next, we'll have a presentation regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget calendar, along with revenue projections and city debt, presented by Kelsey Zarbuck, our budget officer, John Borget, Director of Admin Services, and Dan Follett, Vision Director of Finance. Hello, Kelsey.
Hi, can we actually pull up the budget calendar PDF? Is that okay? Sorry. We had a few PDFs up there, so, um, as was mentioned, we have a few different like sub presentations regarding the budget process. Um, I'm going to go through the budget calendar. Um, John Borget will review the revenue projections and then Dan Follett is going to do a review of the debt. So, this is the budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty six budget process. I'm not going to go through every line item with you, but just so you know, um, anything that's highlighted in yellow or in green on the second page is relevant to council members and by extension, your residents. And so, um, I just want to highlight a few key dates that might be of particular interest to you. This Thursday, February twenty seventh is the date that um we will send out the five year capital improvement plan to the council. Um, I think city code requires that we deliver it to you by March first, and so we'll just make sure it's there by the end of the day Thursday to make that March first deadline. Then on March eleventh, during work meeting, we'll actually go through the capital improvement plan with you. Then on March eleventh, during work meeting, we'll actually go through the capital improvement plan with you and directors. Um, who have capital projects will be there to answer questions, so, um, that's. Kind of what we've been working on lately is the capital improvement projects. Also on March eleventh, that's where you're gonna start to see the departments come in to do their, um, work meeting. Budget presentations for you and. I think there's four work meetings where you'll have a lot of those budget presentations and you can see. Um, just next to the date, what departments you can expect on certain dates. If we go into, um, on the second page, oh, sorry. While we're on this page, just so you know, anything in blue is just kind of administrative internal deadlines, so departments are submitting things. We're just coordinating, making sure everything's getting entered into our budget, so. Thanks for driving me. Okay, on this page, um, just, uh, uh, the date that you probably really want to know is May sixth is when. You will receive the tentative budget presentation during council meeting. That same night, um. The council would tentatively adopt the tentative budget, which is just state code's way of saying the council will acknowledge. That they've received the tentative budget from the administration, but at that point, it's a pass off to you to look through the budget and, um. See what questions you have and then, once we get into June, there's public hearings regarding the budget with June seventeenth being the second and final public hearing. And the budget adoption date. Um, the only exception to that would be if the council had any interest in doing truth and taxation, which if. That ended up happening, there's some deadlines that I think Justin was able to get me. For July and August that you can be aware of, so that's the budget calendar in a nutshell, does anyone have any questions for me?
Uh, Kelsey, I don't see on the, um. Bi-monthly reports, I, I see police, but I don't see fire.
Um, in terms.
Police on the twenty second. So, did I, did I miss it? Oh, there it is, March twenty fifth.
Okay, no, you're good, I was like. It's good to know, so they'll be coming. Um, any other questions? Okay, so John will go through the revenues now.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's. Welcome to talk a little bit about revenues, you know. In the, uh, twenty twenty six budget, I would mention that, uh. This is still very early in the process, uh, and as you know, uh. With budgets, as we get more information. Things change, but at this point in time, this is kind of what we're seeing. And so the first slide just kind of shows you, uh. All of the different sources of. Money that come in for the general fund budget, and as you can see, sales tax is the largest contributor and. Right now it's thirty nine percent, which is pretty significant. The next two items are franchise fees and then what I would call is user fees. And they're both at, uh. Approximately eighteen percent. And then the other items follow, and you can see that, uh, property tax is number four. And then roads and other, and so that's kind of what makes it up, now those are just the revenues, we also in the general fund receive transfers. Yes.
Franchise fee for me?
Yes, so. What happens with, what franchise fees are, uh. Is the state, in state code, we are allowed. To collect, uh, six percent of all utilities operating within the city. And the concept behind that is that, uh, it provides funding to help, uh. Support and work with the, uh. Relationship and the work to support those facility, those. Utilities and most of the utilities that we support, of course, are city utilities, but we have our natural gas, we have some waste haulers. Private waste haulers that go through the city, and so that's six percent is collected and it goes into the general fund. And so that's what franchise fees are.
So does that include that eleven percent that comes from?
It's separate.
That's separate.
Yeah, so, so there's six percent. For the city-owned u- utilities as well as the other utilities operating in Provo, and then there's eleven percent. It gets transferred to the general fund of their total revenues. Yes.
So are we looking at a total of seventeen percent from city utilities coming into the general fund, essentially? Six percent from this side and.
Yeah, you could combine those, uh, but that six percent also includes outside utilities as well, but yes. To answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. It's been, we've collected franchise fee for many, many years and most, most other, uh. Cities within the state do, you could collect a lower percentage or not charge one, but, but it does. It was designed to help the city to be able to maintain and support those utilities.
John, if I might interject, you know, specifically when we're talking about maintaining support, you know, these utilities are present in our roads, right, so. When Questar needs to end bridge, I guess now, when they need to fix a line, they're digging in our roads to. To fix up, uh, their pipes, right? And the internet ca- the internet cables were buried in our rooms as well too, right, so a lot of this goes to. Uh, ma- to compensate the city for. Uh, the fact that they're operating on the city property.
Yeah, we do have a, what I'd call a telecommunications franchise fee that's. Based specifically on, on that as well, that's part, that's part of these franchise fees, they're, they're different ones, but they're all based on that six percent and it's to support that. Any other question on this slide? This next slide, um, shows. In, basically in the general fund. What the difference is between what we're currently budgeting, okay, in revenue in twenty six. Versus what we budgeted in twenty twenty five, okay? And once again, that's based on this point in time, it could change, but right now, one of the things that's significant is that our. Our largest source of revenue is the sales tax. And right now, we are actually budgeting for. A little bit less, almost the same, but a little bit less than we did last year, and, and I would just share a couple of thoughts with you, um. These are some, I shared, we shared this with the directors this morning and had a discussion about the budget. But these are some of the headlines that have just been going on. Within the last week or two weeks, um. It says Utah State revenues are falling short of expectations, uh, another tax cut is still on the table even as. Utah's biggest numbers are lower than expected. Hard decisions, uh, lawmakers will be weighing tasks after low, after. Lower than expected re- projections, and so the bottom line is. And I, we see comparable cities, we also see the state's numbers as a whole. And overall, right now in the state, we're. Lagging and not reaching expectations on sales tax and Provo's no different. And so we see this year and, uh, as, is, is a challenging year, uh. Because quite often, one of the. Biggest ways that we can fund, uh. Different new items as well as, uh, costs related to employees, uh, is through sales tax, there's other sources. But that's a big one, but I will mention that, uh. We as a team have met and we're meeting again later this week. And we're working through these challenges and, uh. We're gonna look at solutions, the other thing that we did this morning is that we kind of had this same discussion with the directors. Let them know that, uh, we need to work on this as a team and work together, and so. I would just mention that, so sales tax at the top, you do see. Some pretty significant increases. In fees versus last year, and I've got another slide, I'm gonna break that down and show you where that increase is coming from. We all show an increase of four hundred sixty thousand in property taxes. I'm gonna give you a breakdown on that too and why that's there. But the other fee, the, the others are all pretty much. The same or slightly negative. And so really, the two big contributors, uh, are the fees. And the property tax, and so. And you would expect rap tax to be down slightly too, because it's very closely related to sales tax.
Yes.
Why do they pay much lower in rental and business licenses?
So I can, the answer to that is that as we've been doing. This study, and by the way, it's getting closer and closer, okay, because we anticipated when we. Submitted the budget, that the study would be done. Before mid-year. And it's still not complete, uh, and so that's the main reason.
Were they holding up doing renewals or?
It's, it's the lo- it's the lower fee, and we expected that we would have additional revenue from the fees. So I would just say that, that's the bad news, the good news is, is that we're getting very close. And, uh, Laramie Gonzalez and the team has, has been meeting and we're, we're kind of getting the final wraps and we're getting ready to come. Back to the council to review the proposals that came from that study.
Then assuming that some of the increase in our fees is due to the fact that we have changed the pricing.
Yeah, that, that's a factor for sure, yes, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you that breakdown here in just a second. Any other questions on this slide? Yeah, we, we budgeted for interest revenue, it's a little lower because rates have been going down some, not significantly, but definitely. Lower than they were in twenty five and even in twenty four, they're kind of, they've kind of got to a point now they're going downward, yes.
The peak in twenty four for us is about five point four percent. Uh, was about. The peak interest rate, uh, in the past year was about five point four percent on what we call. The public treasurer's investment fund where we had most of our funds. When, but today, that's at, um, two, uh, four and a half percent, so we've seen that. We're hoping it'll level out somewhere in there, but it's definitely lower than what, what the peak was for revenue.
This next slide just kind of graphically shows what the other slides, it just, it just shows, you know, the fees being up significantly. Sales tax being down. Uh, and property tax being up, and so that's just kind of a graphical form of what we just saw. And then, uh. This talks about fees, and I, and I'm gonna kind of break this down a little bit, you can see. These are the areas where it increased, the first column might be hard for you to read, this is parks and recreation. That's primarily coming from the Epic Sports Park. Because last year we were only in operation. Few months. And now we're gonna be on an operation the full year, and as the Parks and Rec team and the Epic Sports Park. Team has gone through and budgeted, that, that's not every bit of it, but the lion's share of that's coming from the Epic Sports Park, okay?
Budgeted for increase?
Yes, budgeted increase, yes, so this is. Twenty six versus twenty five budget, yes.
So the question with that is, hundred percent of this Parks and Rec money, is that going back into maintaining the fields? Or is this gonna go for other portions of the general fund?
Great question, and it's a real good question because. The lion's share of this coming from Epic Sports Park. There's gonna be expenditures to support the Epic Sport Park along with that, so that really provides. Funding to maintain and provide that park, but it does not provide funding to go somewhere else in the general fund. Such a good question, but yeah, that, that is the case, yes. Development Services, this is primarily. Building inspection fees, as they went through and did their fee analysis, there was, and I don't know. Kelsey or Bill may be able to help me on this, but there's, there's a little different method that they're, they're using in, in, in by, in charging the, uh. Building inspection fees. And it came from their team and they've done some review and analysis and we feel like that's sound, and so there is. I think it's, it's a combination of two things, one thing is that the fees changed a little bit in this new method, but then also. Construction might just be a little bit larger too, but that's primarily where this three hundred and forty thousand is coming from. And then engineering, uh, that's just primarily from. Their, the anticipation of what's happening with construction, did they make any changes in their fees, Kelsey, do you know? And there were some changes in their fees as well. And then vehicle, uh, we're gonna talk about that, uh, in a slide following, and it has to do with. A change in the way we're gonna be, we're accounting for our debt service fund, a little bit of work that we did there, so I'll be able to, be able to explain that and then they. That, that's the other, so that's, that's kind of how that broke out, any questions?
Is it possible that we could get a graph like this? From this franchise fee so that we can see the breakdown form and how much they are?
Be happy to provide that for you. Yeah, be making note of that, Kelsey. We'll, we'll get that to Justin and then he can get distributed to council, that'll be real easy for us to do. Yes. Okay. So this is transfers, and thi- this is transfers to the general fund, and this is. Fiscal twenty five versus twenty six, okay? And one of the things that we proposed last year, the balance, the budget, and, and I thought it was. There was a good strong argument for it, is we had some ARPA funds that were available. And because we had some revenue loss last year. One of the qualifications with ARPA, by the way, this was unrestricted money, but, but still the intent behind ARPA was. Was the, to go ahead and compensate cities for lost revenue. And so we thought there was a good argument, so anyway, we had this much coming from the legacy CIT. Look at that, touch it and there's a.
Perfect.
They're, I'm magical, okay, uh, of, of one point three million, but this year. There's no ARPA funds, okay, and so as a result, when you're comparing. That means is we're trying to compare the twenty five budget with the twenty six budget. In looking at transfers. Works one point three million less right out of the gates, because we don't, we don't, it was a one-time fee, okay? The other areas, I'm gonna talk about this debt service fund up here, it'll be part of another slide. Uh, but transfers from the energy fund, that's basically just from revenues. And, uh, also I believe they're planning on, there's a build-in, I think it's a two percent. Yes, so that shows there, and then you can see wastewater. And then water down below, and so the overall net though, the primary difference of one point two. Comes from that one point three million, okay? And so as a challenge, I mean, that's just one of those pieces as we are trying to compare twenty six versus twenty five and balance it, uh. Our overall net and transfers in is, is one point two million roughly less. That make sense? Okay. Debt service funds. I want, we went through a process this past year and it was. Kind of initiated by, was initiated by me because I've. Been with the city for many years and I did, I decided to do some research, uh. And, uh, the overall concept and design of a debt service fund is that. You collect money and, and the best example, and the wa- the primary use that we use the debt service fund is that. We collect property tax from the residents to service our rec center bonds. And our city hell bond, which are both general obligation. And so you show the revenue coming in for those property taxes. And then you actually make the payments out. For those property taxes and then the net should pretty much be zero, okay? Uh, well, we've been, we've been doing, running a, a number of other things through the debt service fund. And so I decided to do some research, uh. And we contacted the state, state auditor's office as well as, um. The state area that focuses on property taxes, we contacted the county. Uh, we contacted our independent auditor and they provided us some analysis. And we also sat down with Brian Jones, uh, from our legal department. And did a review and as a result, uh, came back with the following changes, um. The good news is the overall net changes are going to benefit the general fund, but I think. The other good news is that we're gonna be, our debt service fund is gonna be much, uh, simpler based on how it's designed. And, uh, and I think it'll be more transparent and we're in a better place, and so. We get money from the state. Property tax, that's a redemption from prior year. And what that means is that if somebody paid their property taxes late, okay? Then they go ahead and submit them. And they come into the city, well, the, the thing is, we don't really know specifically what. Those dollars were for, the other thing is, is the amount of money that we've already collected. From the, from the taxes in the, in the year when it was due. Already was sufficient to meet our debt service, okay? And so. As, and we, we've also have, there's some property taxes that come into the general fund that are just what we call. The general property tax rate, you know, when we do your, when we've done our cost of living adjustment for property taxes, that's the general fund. Property tax, and so. The decision, what, what we, what we're doing, we've mentioned and, and run it through all these different entities. Is that we're now just gonna take that property tax that we've been putting in the debt service fund and we're just gonna. Run it into the general fund. Vehicle fees also, as you know, when you go to li- license your car, you're charged vehicle fees. And for years, we've taken a portion of the vehicle fees in the general fund. We've taken a portion of vehicle fees in the debt service fund, and then we take a portion of fees that goes to the library. Well, our, what the plan is, is that we're gonna continue to put the portion that goes to the library there. But the amount that have been going to the debt service fund and also to the general fund, we're just gonna deposit it all into the general fund. Much simpler and better. And then we had been making a transfer to the fleet fund of a hundred and twenty five thousand from the debt service fund. And then we had been making a transfer to the fleet fund of a hundred and twenty five thousand from the debt service fund. And it was to help with some of our ambulance and vehicle financing for fire. And so the plan now would be we would just transfer that money directly out of the general fund and not do a transfer out of the debt service fund. And then also we had been transferring to the general fund. Uh three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deposit. From the debt service fund to the general fund. We're recommending that we don't do it any do that anymore. So what will happen? Is the only thing that's gonna be happening in the debt service fund is collecting those property taxes for debt service. And then the payments for the debt service and the other will flow into the general fund. So the bottom line is. The net difference uh is to the general fund is additional two hundred and eighty thousand. In revenue, which which is good and it'll help the general fund out, but it's also. Better to better accounting practice and I think it'll be much cleaner. And so that's why uh when we saw property taxes up four hundred and sixty thousand. It was coming from this four hundred and sixty thousand that was going uh to the debt service. And that's our anticipated budget number. Enterprise revenues. Uh this shows all of our enterprise funds and you can see. That uh energy is the largest, which shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. Roughly fifty three percent of all of our enterprise fund revenue comes from energy. Wastewater is number two. And uh they're at thirty three million and then water is at twenty. And so you can see there that uh that there are the the primary ones and you can look down below and see how each one falls out. But that just gives you a general sense of the total revenue that's coming in from the enterprise funds. This shows uh what the citywide budget revenues are and you can see that uh. Enterprise funds represent fifty five percent of the uh of the total revenues for the city. The general fund represents roughly twenty five percent. And then you can see the other small components. So the bulk of the revenues is coming from the from the enterprise funds and this and the general fund being second. This shows overall increases and decreases uh. In the different revenue funds. So overall, we were up six and a half million. Uh general fund represented nine hundred and fifteen enterprise funds. Ten million, which is pretty significant portion. And then capital improvement. Now we just say with capital improvement, that really just has to do with prime with timing. Uh some years we'll have more. Revenue coming in that we're anticipating for projects, other times less. So I wouldn't take that. Five point six million as negative. I would just say that that's primarily timing. Uh and then the debt service is is going down, but on basically what I just explained. Cause between the the general fund and the debt service fund. Internal service fund, it's too hard, it's too early to tell, you know, we have to do a lot of calculations. So we're just showing that as a net zero staying the same and it shouldn't be significantly different, but that's gonna show that there. And that I can answer any questions? Yes.
Slide?
Yep. Further back or here?
Enterprise increase. What do we attribute that to enterprise funds of ten million to maybe?
Okay, um. It's primarily attributed to um. I can provide you a breakdown.
Can you just send that to us?
I sent it to you. Yeah, I'll send it to you. Perfect. That'll be easier. That way I don't take up your time, but I can get it for you. So we're gonna give you two things. We'll get you this breakdown. And then then the other thing you had requested was breakdown of the franchise fees. If we can get both of those. Any other questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
John.
Turn time over to Dan.
I think I apologize for this every year. That we put this spreadsheet up. Next year, I promise I'll maybe break it out into two sections so it's a little more legible from. There we go. Um if we this is each year we review uh the debt that's outstanding. Uh with the council and kind of the the various um factors and variables uh related to each issuance. Of debt. Uh and so in the left hand column is the description of the debt and the top half of the schedule is governmental activities and the bottom half. Is business type uh activities. And there's oftentimes a date uh next to the debt and that's just the way debt is issued. They'll. They identify the calendar year that the debt is issued, not the fiscal year, but it's the calendar year. Um so that gives you an idea of how long the debt's been outstanding. Uh the first column. Of numbers uh on the left hand side there is the principal balance as of June thirtieth. So this is as of the end of our last. Fiscal year. Um that's the outstanding balance for that particular debt issuance. And then the next column is the annual payment, which includes both principal and interest. And we have all different kinds of payments that take place. Uh everything from monthly in some cases um to twice a year to once a year. Um et cetera, but that's that's the annual payment, principal and interest. Uh the next column is the original issue amount. In other words, when we first issued the debt. That was the total amount that was outstanding for that issuance. Uh the next column is uh the interest rate for uh the issuance. And you can see that particularly for these issuances that have taken place several years ago before we've seen. A little bit of a spike in interest rates. Um the interest rates we have outstanding right now are very favorable compared to. The current interest rate environment. Uh in most cases, and so uh uh it doesn't make sense at this point in time, even though we monitor it. On a regular basis constantly uh to see whether or not it makes sense to re. Uh fund or refinance uh any of the debt at this point in time. Um that's not the case. Uh the repayment term uh shows what the total years are for that particular issuance. And the final maturity date um shows when we'll make the last payment on that loan. So. For instance, the telecom bonds, you can't see it here, that's the third line down. Uh the final payment on those will be made uh February fifteenth of twenty twenty six. So. Yep, less than a year, they'll be gone. Um the payment funding source. Uh shows where the revenue comes from to service the debt. Uh for general obligation bonds, of course, it's property tax levy. And then when you go down, you can see in many cases, particularly when we get down in the enterprise. Uh or business type funds, uh it's revenues from the systems, whether it be wastewater or water, energy, et cetera. And then call date, um generally bonds, most of the bonds we issue are twenty year issuances. And a standard feature in most of those issuances. Uh allow us to call the bonds, in other words, pay them off. And refund them or refinance them after ten years. Uh and so the the call date call feature is what you uh what's listed there. Now, in some cases. Uh for small loans and leases, et cetera. Uh there's no prepayment penalty involved. We could pay them off early at any point in time. And then the tax status is whether or not they're tax exempt or taxable. Generally, uh it's most favorable for the city to issue tax exempt. Uh debt because we get a lower rate because the investor is willing to accept. A lower return or a lower rate because they don't have to pay tax on the interest that they earn. Um in some cases, there was no difference between issuing tax exempt and taxable. Uh and in those cases, on some of the wastewater bonds that we've issued recently. We've done them as taxable because they. Draw less attention from the IRS. There's less chance of being audited or having any issues with respect to the tax exempt status. And then the final column is there are three rating agencies, major rating agencies in the United States, Standard and Poor's, Moody's and Fitch. And um for our larger issuances, we generally have two of the three. Provide ratings before we sell the bonds. Uh and you can see in the in the final column there what the current ratings are. Now those ratings can change over time. They review them. Uh on an annual basis. Um the changes that we've seen in the last couple of years have only been. An upgrade. I think on the energy bond, we went from a double A minus to a double A. Uh for that one, but the rest of them have remained unchanged and. Uh in my opinion, reflect the the healthy financial position of Provo City as a whole. Um I don't uh can we scroll down and just look at the. Allow the council to look at the business type ones too. So this is a list of all of the. Particularly the bonds that are related to the utilities. Um we have some golf equipment leases that we do on a tax exempt basis because it gives us more favorable. Uh funding for those. Uh we have a note payable uh for the airport there also. So that basically covers. Now, again, this is uh through um. I apologize, this should say June thirtieth twenty twenty four right there. Um this is ju through June thirtieth twenty twenty four. Um we've done one issuance of debt since that date. And that's twenty nine million dollars of wastewater bonds that the council approved. Uh and so that will show up on the schedule next year, but that's the only. Uh major debt issuances that we've done since June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Are there any questions?
So the golf course maintenance equipment, that one is paid off now, that one done?
It is. It is paid off. Yeah, again, this is as of June thirtieth twenty twenty four is why you see it, but but it is paid off. I received an email from the golf course yesterday. Uh looking at um acquiring some new equipment. And so I anticipate that we'll be coming back to the council shortly with another lease.
And then on the. The no payable section one oh eight twenty twenty airport. That one has CBDG funding?
Yeah, that's the that's uh the funding that's utilized to repay that note.
Um.
That's the source of funding that's utilized to.
Right. So I'm con- concerned about all CBDG funds right now. Do you have any concerns?
I wish I had better insight to what the federal government would do. I think that's what you're referring to. Um and so that's something that we would watch. We um. Of course, when this when this note was put in place, we. Felt like that funding was uh fairly secure and hopefully it remains. Secure. Uh I am not aware, uh and maybe Bill has a better feel for it, but. I'm not aware that we've received any notification that. We're not going to receive that funding at this point in time. Um and again, it's uh. Uh the federal government. Funding is uh. Little up in the air right now. I do understand that.
Yeah, I've just been looking at everything to see where potential. Issues might be because I want us to be able to to service all of our debt. In a responsible way. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for John? Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
That's fine. I knew who you meant. Thank you.
Or for John. Okay, thank you, Dan and John and Kelsey.
Yeah.
We're probably seeing you regularly in the next meetings. All right. Uh is Brickston here?
Let's see.
You're not here. Okay, we'll take a break. And and come back at at in five or six minutes.
Recording in progress.
Our council meeting, our next presentation will be. A discussion regarding the HTRZ potential. Of the Provo Town Center Mall. Our presenter is Sam Hartman from DA Davidson. Sam, thanks for being here today.
Bet. Yeah, thank, thank you all for your time this afternoon. Uh, I'm Sam Hartman. Sam, although he's my partner, he's, he's in Hawaii, so. He's doing.
You got the wrong end of the deal.
So he, he got the wrong end, right? We're having the fun right here. So yeah, uh, wanted to come in and, and speak a little bit today about. HTRZs, what they are, how they work, um, considerations for Provo, um. Uh, I work for a firm called DA Davidson. We are a national bond underwriter. So we issued about six hundred million dollars of bonds in the state of Utah last year. Across about thirty transactions. So we support jurisdictions, special districts, um. We kind of formed our office here in twenty nineteen and, and have been uh, growing ever since. And so I've had the opportunity to uh, help other jurisdictions form HTRZs. Uh, from soup to nuts, all the way to the, you know, the GOEO uh, hearing to approve the HTRZ. So. Um, so basically, uh, what are these, right? So a ha- a housing and transit reinvestment zone act. This became effective in um, twenty twenty one. And um, every year, there's been updates and amendments to the code. Uh, including some that are uh, on the docket during this legislative session that. I think in all likelihood will, will pass. So I'll kind of speak to some of those things, uh. And a- as they might pertain to what an HTRZ would be here. But in, in reality, you know, had the, you had the state kind of come up with this idea that, that you. We have a housing crisis, housing shortage, and, and I think uh, several on the hill wanted to promote housing. Particularly housing around, can you flip the slide actually? I have a clip here. Okay. Okay, now this is, this is good. So, um. Yeah, there was a few objectives with, with the code. Uh, explicit, obviously, and I think the top two uh, are the most important, right? Build new housing, make it affordable, and do it next to a transit stop. Um, I think that's the bulk of it. Uh, and then I think the other things to keep in mind in all of this is. And the reason this code exists is do it in a way that overcomes the development of impediments. That certainly exists when you're trying to transform. An area around transit, which a lot of times probably has existing buildings that have to be demoed and all of that. Um, or build parking structures, right? Which is always the. It's always seemed to be the eight hundred pound gorilla. It's how do you, how do you finance parking structures? Um, and then I think the other thing on this page, and there, there's others who need to read that. I don't need to read the slide. But I think that the, the, the one word that's sticking around this slide for me is, is transformative. And so I, I think what I've seen, when I've interacted with members of the committee. Uh, and when we, we presented one for South Salt Lake, which we could talk about. I think the committee really wants to be something transformative in nature. And so. Um, and, and so there's been some really great ones that have come through. Uh, and gotten approved and some that maybe were a little less transformative that got a little bit more pushback from the committee. Um, and so. This is a pretty meaty slide. I can just kind of walk through it row by row. Um. And in fact, I think before I go here, I'm just going to go to this last slide. So Provo has the opportunity to potentially apply for an HTRZ. Along uh, front runner stations or BRT. And the, some of the requirements that uh, apply differ by what kind of transit stop it is. Right? And so we didn't grab it up, everything up north, but here's just a subset of. As you guys consider, is this the right tool for, for us? Obviously where it's located. Um, you know, is, is hugely uh, in- important. And what, and where do you want to see that transform to? Kind of redevelopment take place? So. So just kind of back to the, kind of the nuts of this deal, so. Require affordable housing requirements to, in order to get an HTRZ approved is twelve percent affordable. What does affordable mean? Uh, the code's been changing from year to year. Right now it means. Uh, uh, of the twelve percent, nine percent of that twelve percent has to be at eighty percent of the county median. Income and three percent has to be at sixty percent. Uh, and so I, you know, it, it was more lax early on. I think they kind of elevated the, the code over time. Um. So for a commuter rail, there could be up to a hundred and twenty five acres of non-contiguous land in the application. A little less for, I'll just speak to BRT as the applicable here. Uh, and then of that. Of the acreage, fifty pers- fifty one percent of the developable acreage within. The application has to be residential, right? That they're trying to drive residence. Um, and then not only that, but, but it has to be at, at fifty DU per acre. Which is pretty dense, right? Uh, or for BRT, there is a way to, to go less dense, so thirty nine DU per acre. If you go thirty nine DU per acre, you collect sixty percent of the tax increment that the area. Creates instead of.
Sorry, what's the DU?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, just please stop me. And, and this.
There's only a hundred acronyms.
Uh, yeah, dwelling unit.
Well, okay.
Yeah, so, so, uh, you know, fifty dwelling units per acre, that's, you know, that's definitely. They're going vertical, yeah.
Maybe this is too early in your presentation. I don't know, but. The mall only has like, how many acres? Like forty acres?
Um, I actually don't know. Yeah, that, it doesn't have to be a hundred and twenty five acres.
Right, but would it be advantageous for us to like, pick out certain spots along that? Saying, okay, maybe we want this, because you can only have like, what, three applications per county?
It's. Uh, you could have up to, up to eight per county. Oh, that's cool. Eight per county on light rail. And then I gotta check on the BRT. It's limited in Salt, the BRTs are limited in Salt Lake County only.
So I'm just wondering if it's just. If we could just add up, if they, if we get this approved, can we add on later to this? Or, yeah, or is it just more advantageous to say, okay? As an RDA, we want this, 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 and this, and it totals up to like a hundred and twenty five acres.
I mean, I think one, one thought on this is. You could designate the forty acres of the mall, and I don't even know if the mall's forty acres. But you could actually designate acreage around the mall as well. To potentially get redeveloped in a subsequent phase.
Well, I'm wondering if it's more advantageous if we look further along this BRT route. And not just the mall and those places, just immediately, just because it's not contiguous.
It's not, it's not continuous, but I think this, you gotta think about this. Required in conjunction with the, with, with the not continuous, because you can end up. Around the, a commuter rail station, you draw a radius. And that's where your HTRZ can be. That application. So I don't think you could say. I'm gonna draw a radius around this station and put, you know, thirty acres here, and then I'm gonna draw another radius around.
Right, but we could still draw a radius, a third radius around and say. These makes sense to us.
You could.
But we, we want to do that all in one application, or could we build on top of, and then they're.
I don't, I don't think there'd be an advantage of, of, of bringing it up in multiple applications. Think you want to put it in a single application.
So we're looking, it would be advantageous for us to look at a bigger picture rather than just the mall.
So like let's, and I, again, I, I'm, I came to speak. In an overarching way about this. In fact, when you guys do your application, you will meet the applicant submitting to GOEO. Right? So this is your report. Um, and there's obviously collaboration with developers.
And who's GOEO?
Uh, the, uh, gov- governor's office of econ- economic opportunity. Yeah, a, a lot of jargon, sorry. This is. Uh, it's been in my head for too long, so. So, but back to this map really fast. So I think what you're suggesting is you can draw. The radius right around the front runner station or any of these. And you can select a hundred and twenty five acres within this circle.
Right.
They don't have to be contiguous. So you grab them all, but then if there's other parcels that you guys are like. I know this is gonna redevelop, then you would, you would include those all in the same application.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think interestingly here, back to this table. This. Third mile radius for commuter rail. There is an amendment that's being evaluated during, right now. That, um, cities of the second class and counties of the second class, which I believe. That over that, but I believe you qualify under that. New, under this new uh, amendments can extend from a third of a mile to half mile. So that gets pretty meaningful as far as the area that you get to choose your hundred and twenty five acres. I mean, that, that's a, like, really placed here to favor.
And that happens here. So even though we have none of the max, I like, I'm just seeing this now for commuter rail, we have none of the maximums. Would it be more advantageous for us to stick it in one proposal rather, or would we just break it out proposal by proposal?
I, I, I think you stick it in one proposal.
Just try to tackle it all now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well. Let me, let me ask a clarifying question because I want to make sure I understand. Beck, are you, are you asking about whether it's advantageous to put every. Non-contiguous parcel that is within one circle in the same application, or are you saying? Or are you asking if you think it would be advantageous to submit every circle at the same time?
I was thinking what would be the better course of action. I mean, some of those I looked and I saw there's only three applications in Salt Lake County. And then I realized there's none for this commuter rail. So I was just wondering what would be the best for us to do, because if they're a limited amount or if they're a lot of work. Would it be better for us to draw half and, half a mile around the commuter rail system and say, okay? We're looking at this vision for our RDA. We think this, 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 and this with the hundred and twenty five. Non-contiguous acres would make sense for us to put all in one proposal right now, get it done over with, out the door. Rather than the mall's coming to us now, let's do one proposal here. Um.
Another.
Another month comes in, five years from now, let's do this now, or even six months from now, let's do it again. What, what's, what's the better strategy for us to look at?
Well, you know, and I don't, no, don't know what your opinion is, but the, the reason why I was asking that clarifying question, good, I'm still not sure. I, because I think it makes sense to me that if you're submitting an application for an HTRZ that is centered on. The mall BRT station, or the, or the, or if it's centered on the. Front runner light rail station. Makes sense to me that, that one application includes every property that would be in that zone on that station together. I don't think that, that, and, and I just wanted to make sure this wasn't what you were saying. I don't think you need to submit. One application that has all the properties around the front runner station and all the properties around the nine hundred east. BRT station and all the properties, I, I think that's gonna get.
No, I was just thinking, just, I mean, if we're gonna do this anyway for the mall, is it best for us, for our time, for everything? To just say, you know, this is our vision for Provo. We want this HTRZ go here, 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 as long as.
I think that's the right answer. I think as you suggested, is, is also the most efficient way to do it. What we did in a, another one where we were hel- helping a jurisdiction is, we knew certain developers, and in that, in this case, there was like. Many developers. Like had purchased land within the zone that wanted, but then there were parcels that. We, there was no developer identified yet. So we, you know, we worked with the city to just make the best educated. Decision of, of the ones that we don't have a developer identified yet. Which ones do we think are the most strategic or the highest probability? To, to someday redevelop. And that's how we, you know, max out our, our parcel. Up to a hundred and twenty five acres.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Because I don't care about nine deals right now because we don't have a proposal. But I do care about if we're moving forward with the mall, what other properties do we, which could possibly benefit from this tool?
That makes sense.
So, great, great question. Um, so what do you get for doing this? You get, you get eighty percent, at least in the commuter rail. Version, you get eighty percent of the tip. For twenty five uh, consecutive years up to a forty five year period. So it's, you know, I, I think it's quite substantial, right? I, I mean, obviously. Uh, the, and the way you do it, right, is. Like just speaking from experience, we worked with the jurisdiction. We, you know, we helped them put together this package. We could show you some examples. And um, took it, helped them present it to GOEO, GOEO, uh, committee. Uh. And, and then, uh. There's a GAC analysis that the committee then missions usually from like science, public finance. To validate, you know, the BUCK four analysis that, that, you know. You guys would collectively come up with or come up with, with us. Um, you know, at, at the end of the day, the application needs to say. You know, if we didn't have the HTRZ. We couldn't do X, Y, and Z. The HTRZ tax increment generates this much money. That covers the, the gap, right? So it's an analysis that identifies. You know, we're gonna have to build parking garages. You know, we're gonna have to build parking garages or the construction type is, you know. Uh, type three instead of type five, that's more expensive, and so you come up with the list of costs that, that. You otherwise just couldn't bear in the existing market. So, and then for BRT, this, this per completion say. You get eighty percent, but, but you get it for ten years fewer. And then if you do thirty nine. The, um, units per acre instead of fifty. Then you get, um. Then you get sixty percent for fifteen years. Right, so the, the biggest thing for your budget would be. Commuter rail, that's where you're gonna get the most money. If that's the right location. Yeah.
So in layman's terms, this means that we get eighty percent of the property tax increment capture. And twenty percent goes back to the developer.
Goes back to the taxingist.
Goes back to the taxing entities?
Yeah, so for a hundred dollars of tax. Right, incremental. That we've created, cause we've built new nice thing. Um, eighty percent flows into the agency you guys designate to administer the program. Like your RDA, CRA, whatever it is. I think RDA is what this is. Um. Twenty percent goes to the original taxing entity, the school district or whoever. You guys would then. Establish a partnership of, like an interlocal agreement. With the developer or developers. Whereby, um. You know, they would capture. Uh, uh, some or all of that eighty percent. Um, in order to bring about the project that you guys want to see. Uh, happen. So that's, that's how that would look. That make sense?
No, it's clear as mine.
I thought the whole eighty percent had to go to unit choice, so that not being.
Say, say again, sorry.
I thought, I thought the whole eighty percent had to go to.
The developer? Um. You guys.
So if we decide to give sixty percent, does that mean forty percent go back to the taxing entity?
No, no.
Or is that twenty percent?
So all, all of the funds have to be used for the benefit of the HTRZ.
Right, okay.
Okay, so.
So whether it's a developer or.
I've seen it, I've seen it multiple ways, right, I've seen it where. Where the jurisdiction has provided. All eighty percent to the developer. And then I've seen it where. The jurisdiction said, well, we need to keep. Ten percent of this to make some right of way improvements within the zone. It all has to benefit the zone.
Got it, so we can do.
We can do whatever we want to with that twenty percent. But eighty percent of whatever that increment is has to go somewhere towards that project, whether it's our capital improvement or whether it's developer.
Well, let, so let me go, let me go, a hundred dollars collected in incremental tax. Twenty percent of it goes to the taxing.
So back to school.
Back, so we don't touch that.
Right.
Eighty goes down to you.
As an RDA.
As the RDA, and of that eighty. That will go to benefit everything in the boundaries of the HTRZ. And so that would. Typically, that some, that would flow to the developer. Some of it would be kind of hived off to, to do some other sort of improvements within the boundary. Of the HTRZ.
So that could be our public works upgrading, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
As long as it's spent within the HTRZ.
Yeah, it has, it has to. Like, yeah, the idea is the money. Is used to satisfy the objectives of the HTRZ.
And then the terms of the dealer, we have to have that eighty percent going back to the project for twenty five years. But it could start twenty years after.
Yeah, you wouldn't think of it happening that way.
Cause that's a forty five year period, that's pretty.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think there's, you know, it's. You wouldn't think of it that way, but if for some reason you got your HCHRS approved and then. You know, the real estate market was on ice for a decade. Right, you could start your HCHRS collections in year ten. And you could collect twenty five consecutive years at that. Right, so once you start, you can't stop. So that's, that's how they, they draft it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the TTF, no, I, I don't think it's worth spending too much time on. The, the TTF. Sales tax increment flows into TTF. And then projects would have to individually like apply for grants to access.
Sure, what is, what is TTF?
That money. That's the, it's basically a program, the sales tax increment flows into this program called TTF. I don't know who administers it.
Do we even have sales tax on this if we have a property tax increment? Here, we double dipping here?
Not double dipping, if you had. If your HCRZ had re- residential components. But it also had a commercial component.
Which this one would, right?
Yeah, generates new sales. An incremental sales above the base year. So if we added a new. I don't know, a new, uh, INN, right? So we've, we've increased the, the sales tax flowing in to this. Incremental sales tax above the base year with fifteen percent of it would flow to this TTF fund. And the fund, it doesn't flow to, to the RDA like the property tax would. It flows to this separate fund. That. Developers in Jersey just could apply to access. Those funds to pursue certain projects.
So we're only giving up fifteen percent of the increment that we collect in sales tax, we're not giving up. So we're giving up more property tax than we are sales tax.
Correct, and you're, you're giving it up as the city, but the school district. All the, all the districts are giving up in the, in the, to the tune of eighty percent, right? So. Um, yes, that's, that's how it works. Um, any questions on this one? Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure Helen caught part of this, but, um. Is this something the council does? Uh, has to come to agreement with the other taxing entities on?
That's the beauty of the HTRZ. So normally, when you do a CRA.
Right, of course.
You have to go to each individual taxing entity.
Yep.
And get their approval.
Not with this.
I think. I'm like, maybe speaking out of turn, but what I suspect happened was. It got awfully hard to do that, right? So, so I think at the state level. For, you know, folks up on the hill trying to endeavor to accomplish state level objectives, like increase housing. They've come up with this tool.
Got it.
Now. Uh, maybe jumping ahead a little bit, so. It's not like. There's no input, right, so. We package up an application. Right, it's, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So we submit it to, uh. To the governor's office, the economic opportunity who leads this up. And then we all sit down in probably this room and we have a, a meeting. Uh, and we go through the application. The folks involved on that committee that have a vote are. The committee chair, um. Someone from Provo. Someone from UDOT. Someone from the state treasurer, someone from the senate, someone from the house of reps. Uh, the school district. Here, the largest participating local taxing entity after the school district, so. All the stakeholders are getting together. Um, in one meeting. But in one meeting. They take a vote. And if it gets approved, then. You don't have to go. Get each individual taxing entity.
So it doesn't have to be unanimous, obviously.
And it doesn't have to be unanimous, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I think, yeah, I think if it's back to that, as transformative. Like. I, I would say that the. In, in my experience. The committee's been generally pleasantly surprised by the level of. Kind of thoughtfulness and comprehensiveness and the magnitude of projects that have been kind of positive to. To, uh, you know, to get, to get HTRZ.
So Sam, you have a, a lot of really great content here. Um, unfortunately, we're, we're kind of short on time, if you could pick one of your two samples, either South Salt Lake.
Yeah.
Or South Jordan.
Yeah.
And then just run through the requirements. And, and certainly the legislative amendments that we're taking a look at.
Okay, so, um. Proposal requirements, ba- basically, the nuts and bolts of it are, there's the list of objectives. And. You know, we draft with you a, an application that talks about how our application. Satisfies each, each of the, the stated objectives in the project, that's, that's really the. The bulk of the application, I would say that's the nuts and bolts piece. I think what I learned in my first go around is. There is a, a thought to have like a little bit of, of, of a softer narrative to. Of like, what does this really do from a macro picture, how is this really transformative, but the combination of those two? Um, create the application, I could send you guys all the full blown application. But like, this is one that, you know, that, that we drafted in concert with South Salt Lake, you know, it's like. The place to live, the place to work, the place to move, like we showed connectivity. You know, throughout the HTRZ and how we were enhancing that. Right, we were showing, look, here's what the building is, it's like white, that's real uses. This is what it's going to be, right, we talked about why is it a place of the worst. It's, you know, it's in the heart of the dentist's deployment center, so you know, we make. You know, we craft the, the whole story. Um, and then, um. And we do the, the analysis of like, we, there's this much tax increment, this is the kind of quantitative portion of it. Like based on the anticipated uses over time. We anticipate that there will be this much tax increment generation. Right, and the present value of that today is about this many dollars and. And, you know, our gap, we need this much in funding. And so we kind of marry those two together, right, the, the tax increment capacity. With the extra costs that are gonna be created by trying to do something transformational. And that's part of the but for analysis. So that's, that's how the application works. Um. Uh, and you know, you guys read through this, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, I would say that. The, what's on the, the agenda for the legislature in this latest iteration of, of the HTRZ is. Is not groundbreaking, yes, refinements, so. One thing they included is, um. At least twenty five percent of the, of the units have to have it more than one bedroom. You know, they just don't wanna stuff a bunch of studios. So, you know, I think just on the margin like that. A little bit of logistics, like you have to submit to, to designate which parcels you want in your HTRZ. To start that twenty five year clock. The year before, so you can't just spring it on them. There's some minutia, you could actually, you could actually start. Different portions of your hundred and twenty five acres. You, at different trigger points. So you get a phase one, start and go for twenty five years. And then phase two could start five years later. Collect a full twenty five years of increment as well. That was a, a change over the last few years, um. And so, uh, tho- those were kind of the, the big ones. Um, and so, and I think the biggest one is actually placed to your favor where. Where that, uh, the commuter rail station could give that half, half mile diameter instead of a third mile. Yeah.
Just had a quick question, I know you covered this at the very beginning. Um, and what portion of the house, what's the guidelines around, um, affordable housing, where AMI you'd use percentages of AMI?
Yeah, it's, it's eighty percent of the county median income. For nine percent of the total units in the project.
You said nine.
Yes, and then there's three percent has to be at sixty percent.
Okay.
So it's a total of twelve percent affordable at those thresholds. For families of similar size, so. That's, you know, a little bit in the weeds, but it's like, okay, for family four, here's what the AMI is, this is what we need to hit. Um, those units need phase through the course of the buildup. So you can't just stuff them all in the last year. Right, you kind of have to maintain twelve percent as you go.
Yep. They said earlier that was county median income, not city median income, is that correct?
County, county, yeah, yeah.
So, Bill, what is that?
Truly higher the problem.
Well, I realize that, that's what I'm wondering.
Um, it's in the general plan, I just don't remember off the top of my.
Yeah, it's in the general. Definitely, but.
Yeah.
It's pretty high.
And that's a minimum, right, that's the twelve percent?
Yeah, twelve percent minimum, you could go high. It used to be ten, the legislation started at ten, then they bumped it to, to twelve.
And is that, and that all stands independent of ownership versus rental or?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, and, and tell me when I have to shut up, cause I could talk.
You can take, um, for a moment.
Okay, so, so. They did add an objective in one of the later iterations of, of the bill. That one of the objectives is to enhance owner occupied units. And probably being recorded, so maybe I'll get in trouble, but. But I would just note that. Um, density of fifty units. Per acre or above. Tends to be for rent. Right, and that is a requirement of the HTRZ. So it's kind of hard to, I think it's kind of hard to really hit that owner occupied objective. When you also have this other constraint of it's gotta be really dense. Unless they're condos, right, for sale condos. I think, I think.
And why, why couldn't they be for sale condos?
They could, yeah, they could.
Well, I know, why did you say it's pretty much gotta be rentals?
Um, I just think that in the market. Just the market dynamics and the players in the market. Tend to build for rent. I think the capital is there for it, it's easier to finance. I think there's with condos, you have construction defect litigation, which. Which I think puts a damper on the amount of condos.
That's also being addressed through, uh, legislation as well.
Well, yeah, so I think if that starts kind of. Resolving itself. I'd like to think we'll see more condos, I think condo is a great product, I'd, I'd love to see more condos. Uh, I'm just pointing out kind of this. You know, you've got a kind of a give and take there.
Yeah, just for context, every downtown apartment building that's been built has been over fifty years. Easily over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I asked, and we're gonna talk about this later, uh, in our fourth meeting, but I, I, I've been. Talking to some developers who've been saying. You know, that the banks are not loaning. They're loaning for rentals, they're not, they're much less willing to loan for ownership models, so.
I would tend to think that's, that's true, I mean, the multifamily. Industry is pretty well oiled. You know, like it's pretty robust, so. Anyway, this is my. Main phone number, email, would love to follow up with you guys, um. And just be a resource to you as you think about how best to, to go about, go about doing this, um. Probably a lot more to talk about, but hopefully this gives you guys a good start.
Thank, yes, thank you, Sam, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm Sam Mark.
Phil.
Yeah, you know, he's.
The non Hawaiian.
Yeah, I'm the one not in Hawaii, right, I think if he's watching. Uh, from the beach, uh, yeah, so.
Thank you, Sam, that's been very insightful and encouraging, we appreciate your report and information today, and we will. Plan to use you as a resource on this podcast.
Sounds great.
Very much.
You bet.
Thanks, Ken. Next, we will. Discuss a resolution approving the appropriation of twenty thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars in the general fund. For a post-performance sales tax increment payment to the shops at Riverwoods presented by Melissa McNally. Our. Community grant administrator.
Thank you, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm here to seek an appropriation for, um, the development dis- services department for, um. An economic, uh, development sales tax incentive that was, um, it was approved back in twenty eighteen. Um, this is for the shops at the Riverwoods. And, um, the effective date is September twenty second, twenty twenty one. Um, the amount is reflective of, um, the agreed half percent over and above the. The sales tax performance. And, um. This is the third year. Sandy, is that right, the third year, sorry, sorry. Um, the third year, this is a fifteen year agreement, um, it's fifteen years or one point five million, whichever comes sooner. So, do you have any questions for me on this, uh? On this, yes. Yes.
It's more like a thank you. I was the one that asked for all of this financial information every time I got this, I do really appreciate the time and work that you spend on this.
Yeah, this was. Wish I could take the credit, this was all Sandy, I'm just, I'm just the presenter, Sandy's the, Sandy's the worker on this. So, yeah, she's pretty fantastic.
I love seeing the actual sales tax numbers for the first time.
Yeah.
That was great.
For real. Okay, we've never seen that before. Okay, Sandy, good job. Yeah, you're you're setting a good standard going forward. I love it.
Any questions on this appropriation? So will this come to a council meeting then, right?
It it will. Um, I think in another two weeks, it'll come, it'll come to the the council.
All right. If there are no questions, we'll move to the next item. Which is a resolution approving the appropriation of eighty four thousand seven hundred and eighty four dollars in the general fund. For contractual sales tax increment post performance payment to Parkway Village, Melissa.
Okay, so this is similar. Uh, again, this is for an agreement that was um, that was. Made in twenty sixteen. Uh, the effective date is twenty seventeen. It's for a ten year term. Um, and it's another uh half percent over and above just sales sales tax baseline. And uh, so that amount, the eighty four thousand seven eighty four is reflective of of that agreement amount. Um, and this is six years worth of of increments. Um, so this will sunset in twenty twenty seven. Um, or when we have one million fifty three thousand. Uh, dollars, whichever comes first. So do you have any questions on uh on this one?
Again, I think Sandy worked it out so well. It's a, it's amazing. I love it. Thank you. No, I mean, this is the stuff we've been missing that really, really makes a difference. Thank you.
Good job, Sandy.
Well, Melissa does back on track.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of questions because you gave us information and we're able to read ahead of time. So thank you.
Yes, Sandy, you're amazing. Phil, she's amazing. Don't let her down.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Sandy. For your help with this.
Melissa, you're also amazing.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution approving the transfer of six hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars from the general fund to the airport fund. For an interfund loan payment and an associated appropriation. Of a hundred and sixty thousand seventy one dollars in the airport fund to pay for the interest expenses presented by John. Borget, Director of Administrative Services.
Yeah, to give just a little bit of history, uh. Back in April of twenty twenty, uh, you said you had an opportunity to purchase some property that was adjacent to the airport. Uh, and the agreement was made to do an interfund loan. Uh, it was a ten year loan with a fixed uh. Principal payment of four hundred and ninety thousand oh fifty three. And then the interest was variable based on the state fuel rate. Uh, this is an interfund loan between. The airport and energy. Uh, and so, uh, we've done the. Calculations. One of the things that was talked about when the loan was originally placed was the intent and hope was at some point. That the airport would be able to cover this loan without any help or assistance from the general fund. And uh, as was brief, was recently mentioned to the council from uh, from Brian, who just joined us. How are you, Brian? Uh, that there's a, their, the plan and the feeling is that in fiscal twenty seven, uh. That the airport will be in position where they will be able to make the entire loan payment. The general fund would not need to pay all or a portion of it. But in the current year, with the needs that are happening at the airport and the growth and the expansion, everything that's going on, the uh. The recommendation is for uh, general fund, general fund to provide a transfer to the airport so that loan can payment can be made. I will mention that the uh. The current balance started at four point nine million uh is three million oh twenty four oh twenty seven. After this payment, the balance would be two million four fifty twenty two sixty one. And then the loan that would will retire in twenty thirty. I'd also mention that we've made, we've been kindly on the payments. It's been an annual payment. We've. Always done it in this October, in this uh February timeframe. And so, energy has been receiving the same kind of, the same interest that they would have received. Had they not extended the loan. So they have not been hurt by the loan. So with that, uh, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John? Yes, Counselor Hoben.
So, I mean, long story short, we didn't have quite the revenue we expected, or we had more to expect.
I think, long story short, was that there was. There was a strong feeling that this uh. Purchase was very important and it was kind of a strategic time to do it. But we didn't see a time in the near future where the airport would. We have the ability to pay it. And so the feeling was, we're going to go home and do it, knowing that the general fund's going to pick up.
Okay, so just unexpected, yeah, unexpected opportunity, so to speak. Wasn't necessarily planned for a year ago, something that came up and.
We've, we've, we've done it. I think we, we all hoped it would be a little sooner. But this is the first time that we've done this since the initial loan that we're actually saying that in. Twenty twenty seven, fiscal twenty seven, that the general fund wouldn't have to pick it up for the last three years.
So it was just.
That's right.
When did we get there, you think?
Fiscal twenty seven is what we've been told. And Brian can expand on that if you want. He's here.
Sure, I think I would like to do that, but. Elaborate on that a bit. Your thoughts on that?
I think it's on.
So, as you know, we've been, we've been in front of the council many, many times with personnel increases with. With other things going on. So we've, that's always been the balance, right? Is how do we accommodate the growth that we've experienced, which is. Incredible, explosive. Um, so that's kind of been the balance is. And we, and and we had that conversation, right? Do we, do we put off what we're doing and pay this, this uh. This loan payment, or do we go ahead and ride this wave of momentum that we're seeing at the airport? So the idea is in twenty twenty seven, um, it's not going to be any easier, right? Because, because it seems like our, our need keeps growing along with, with the operations. It's just now. That's what we're committing to and uh, that's what we'll be budgeting for coming in the future. We also have. Uh, something we've never had as far as revenue, um, is a P S C, which allows us to uh start looking at paying some of these things that we've never been able to. So that's, it's a public facility charge. Um, it's a fee that's approved by the FAA. Typically set aside for a very specific project. It's all like an impact fee, but it's charged each passenger on your payment. So. Um, it's, it's very regulated and what it can be used for. And we have that option to pay for some sources of this, so.
So that's one more fiscal year after this one.
Correct. And granted, if we have a wild year and our revenues are out of where we expect them to be. Uh, this year's turning out to be a pretty good year again. Started off slow, but um, I think we're going to be. Right out of our budget, which is again, the last two years, we picked up public safety a hundred percent from the general fund. We picked up. Um, the airport as well, which in the past, just two years ago, was receiving a fairly cited subsidy from the general fund. And so. It's just part of that progression we expect in twenty twenty seven. We'll see that, that, just that additional revenue to be able to cover the spin.
Yeah, I would add each year, including this year, uh, we've always met with uh. The Public Works and the airport and Brian or his predecessor had discussions about whether. The airport could cover a portion of this, and we would be back again next year. What we're saying right now is that next year would be the last year, but like Brian said, maybe next year, things will be a little different and they'll be able to cover it.
Okay, well, I apologize for asking questions that were already answered. I wasn't listening to.
No.
Sorry for being that guy.
No, it's good discussion. And I would also add that our recommendation is that this go back for council action in two weeks.
Any other questions for Brian? Or John?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, we'll now take a break. For like fifteen minutes. Our next item is at three fifteen. We'll see if we can bring him in a little early. It might, it might be ten or fifteen minutes. Oh, it's Brian. So you're our next item. Okay.
Recording stopped.
Wow. Yeah, it'll be fun to have.
We'll begin again, our, our council session. Our next presentation is a resolution approving an inter-local agreement with the Utah County. With Utah County regarding funding for the municipal airport, Provo Municipal Airport Terminal Expansion. And a resolution appropriating nineteen point five million in the airport fund for airport terminal expansions. Expansion presented by Brian Torgerson, the airport director.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Appreciate you. Being here and let us present. So this, this is actually two. Uh, resolutions apparently. So I guess in two weeks, we'll, we'll actually see two items, but wanted to clarify. Well, this is all. Um, revolving around the county's inter-local agreement with the city to, uh, provide. Up to seventy-eight million dollars in project funding for the expansion of the terminal. So this first part may be a little bit repetitive, but I wanna, I wanna go through it just to, uh, remind everybody why, why we're here talking about a, a huge funding contribution from the county. So. Uh, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, we opened our new terminal. Um, this is my new favorite picture. Um, it even, it even passed up the one I took myself. So, um, anyway. This was just last week. So, uh, well, it was actually the day this was, was submitted. So. Um, as we've talked before recently, ten commercial aircraft based at the Pearl airports, the facility that was designed for four. Um, seven hundred and seventy-five monthly, uh, flights in and out of the airport, which is something that, uh, is pretty significant. Um, our route map, so we're up to sixteen non-stop destinations with. Hundred and sixty plus one-stop destinations. And obviously, if you go to a two-stop, you're. Literally, here's our tagline, anywhere you want to go, fly Provo, right? Um, that is a reality. That's what American Airlines is doing. So. Americans' numbers are picking up, um, which we're excited about that. Dallas is doing really, really well. Um, Phoenix not as well, but it's, it's slowly. Um, picking up. And I guess that's to be expected. We have a lot of seats going to Phoenix and Mesa. So. Um, all three airlines fly to either Phoenix or Mesa. So, um, you would expect Phoenix not to do quite as well on the network carrier side, but. Um, we anticipate a few more being announced here shortly. Um, nothing to share at this point, but we know, uh. There's a lot of interest from our airline partners and, and, uh, continue to see success. Uh, again, you've seen this chart, um, pretty incredible. Um, you probably read in the Salt Lake Tribune article or, or heard when Isaac and I went up and presented to the state legislature requesting money. There's some concern about, are we growing too fast? Is this a bubble that's gonna burst? Um, and I guess that's, that's a reason for i- in every business in the world. That's a concern, right? Um, and I was just talking to Council Bogdan. Right now, our airlines are doing well. They're making money. They're announcing more routes all the time. Um, why would they pull out at this point? Um, the only reason they would pull out is if they continue to, to lose money, which they're not doing right now. And so. Um, there was some conversation that we're subsidizing our airlines, which is not true. Um, we offer an incentive, which, um, is for, is only for new routes. Um, and that's limited to two years, and that's an FAA limitation. We can't do anything more than that. And an air carrier incentive program is actually very common. It's, there's over two hundred and fifty airports across the country that, that have used that program. And it's exactly what it sounds like. It's to incentivize airlines to come try Provo. It's an unproven market, right? Um, we know Salt Lake does well, but are people actually gonna choose to fly Provo? The airlines don't know if they will or not, but yeah.
So you mentioned, you mentioned that there's other carriers that you're talking to. Do you have capacity for other airlines?
Uh, yes, we do. Um, we have to get creative. Um, we, we have. Pavement on the airport where we're parking planes. The other thing is we don't necessarily have to base them here at night, right? So we can, it, say they start in, in Wichita or wherever and fly in after our big rush in the morning, we can accom- accommodate that fairly easily. It's where they wanna keep it here overnight and leave, you know, six thirty, seven AM in the morning where we run into problems. So. Um, so anyway, uh, just, just by the numbers real quick. We give away currently, we have five routes, sorry, seven routes of our nineteen routes that are on an incentive period still. Actually, we're down to six, cause one of them dropped off last week. By June, another one will drop off. So that will leave five of nineteen routes that are under incentive currently. Yeah.
So what exactly, how exactly are we incentivizing them?
So it's, it's not really an incentive. Basically, we waive landing fees and terminal use fees, right? So those are two areas of, of revenue that we collect from airlines. And in that incentive period, we waive those two fees. And so. On average, across all routes, all carriers, we're offering about sixty-six cents per in-plane passenger in incentives. Okay? Contrast that with what we make per in-plane passenger. It's about eleven dollars and thirty cents. That's parking, that's concessions, that's all of those other things that are induced benefits from the airlines. So. When you look at it, they're being incentivized, but not really. They still have their flight crews to pay, their fuel to pay, all of those things. We're not. It still costs them an extremely high amount of money to operate. We're just reducing that risk of, of that startup period so that that market can mature. And those seats get filled. And once those seats are getting filled, then when, when we stop offering that incentive. They're still okay because now their planes are full, rather than half-full.
Sixty-six cents, what does that translate into per month?
Per month? Um. Well, we're about forty thousand in claimants a month, so I, not very quick, twenty-four thousand a month that we're offering in incentives. But again, the five that will be left after June have all been added this year. That's Dulles with Breeze, that's DFW with Breeze, DFW with American, Phoenix with American. So all brand-new routes, all are driving insane amount of passengers into the airport right now. So. With that, this is just kind of a site plan of the terminal expansion. So, um. You can see plans are to expand the, the parking lots as well. We get a lot of comments on the gravel parking lots, which for good reason, right? Um, it's still funny to me. There's a ton of about three hundred stalls that are never parked in that are paved. On the south end of the, of the parking lot. Um, I guess the perception is it's closer to park in the gravel, but anyway. Needless to say, we know that's a big part of what we need to do with expansion is improve all of the facilities, not just the terminal. Um, so beginning. In April, we'll actually go to construction on the north and south apron expansion. So that project's out to bid currently. We're estimating that's about a thirty-million-dollar project. Um, you all approved an appropriation or, or at least the receipt of a loan from UDOT, uh, what was it, two weeks ago? Uh, which will go with about twelve million dollars of FAA funding to, to start the construction of that project. Um, soon after that, you'll see, um, the expansion of the building begin to take place. Um, we've spit, split that expansion. Uh, anyway, here's a rendering of what that building might look like. We're not quite done. Um, but we've split the expansion up into, into a couple of phases, and part of that's because of funding. We have strings attached to some of the FAA funding, which, which has a, a due date to be spent. And so, does this have a laser pointer on it?
That's a draw, it's great.
Okay, sure. So, so we, we've split off this area of the project, which is our ticketing and baggage screening area. Um, as kind of a standalone project in the eyes of the FAA. One, it's small enough, we can get the design plans done, awarded to a contractor and started building. In time to meet those funding deadlines. And two, that's the choke point of our, our operation right now behind the apron expansion. Soon after that, um. We'll, we'll be in the design of the terminal itself, the rest of the terminal. So here's, here's kind of the upper level, your typical airport concourse is on both the north and south end. Um, let me go back a slide. You'll see on the bottom level, on the extreme south end, which is the right side of the page, we're. We're currently planning for, uh, providing space for custom and border patrol. We've talked about Provo International Airport. Um, so right now, that's kind of the last priority of the expansion, um, as far as finishing that space out. Um, if our money goes far enough and if we're successful at the state and, and in other places. We'll go ahead and finish that space out to accommodate for customs and board control. Um, something of note, this bottom level, you'll see. On the north side, it's a lot of baggage handling system. Um, we're designing the facility to accommodate full-blown at-capacity operations at ten gates. But we're not building the baggage system to that point right now because that baggage system alone's about nineteen million dollars. And so we're building the space to accommodate it, but we'll build the system itself in phases so that we're, we're not overbuilding. Um, because it will take us a number of years to, to grow into that. But we are designing the systems to plug and play so that we don't, uh, end up. Spending money now that we can't take advantage of in the future. So. And then on the south side, a lot of that ground level is actually shell space for airline operations, um, lease space. Where we can make revenue, um, in addition to our normal airline operations. Uh, so it's, it's rentable space by our tenants at the, at the terminal. Um, so this, this just phases out the entire project a little bit. Again, total project's about a hundred and forty million dollars. Um, I'll show you kind of where that money's coming from. Um. Uh, but, but again, first phase are, are one and two, the apron, phase three, the baggage and ticketing, and then we just go into the rest of the site. We've got to move rental car, uh, facilities to accommodate the expansion on the south side. So we're pretty excited about, uh, getting this project going and, and moving forward. I don't know where that arrow came from. Did I do that? Anyway, pay no attention to the arrow. I don't want to hit this. This is a rough project timeline, and let me, let me stress that it's rough. Um, right now, you'll see that the, the terminal apron, which we talked about, we anticipate construction beginning in the next, uh, six weeks. And that will be completed, um, before hard winter, I guess. Um, that's gonna be a push to get that much work done in, in one construction season. And then that first phase of the building, you can see we anticipate starting construction around. Um, well, for the FAA, we have to have a guaranteed maximum price by middle of May. So essentially a bid from a contractor by the middle of May and hopefully start construction in about August timeframe. The rest of the building, um, it's a much longer design process. There's a lot of, um. Building to, or designing to our budget, um, so that we're making sure that the funds that we have set aside for the project actually were able to build it. So. Um, we have about a hundred and thirty-two million dollars in place. Now, funding years, those vary, and so we've talked previously about. interim funding steps, for example, the, the SIB loan from UDOT. We anticipate one more chunk, um, where some of the timing of, of some of these funds. It, it gets difficult to cash flow the project, and so we're gonna be exploring different options of how to do that. But. The, the big story in this is why we're here today is that seventy-eight million dollar contribution from the county. Um, so what that consists of, um, I wanna, I wanna stress, the county's already put in. Four-point-three million plus ten million. Prior to the seventy-eight million. So they put in four-point-three million on the initial terminal project. Ten million, we're two years in on that deal, so we still have three-point-four million remaining. We used six-point-six million of that first ten million chunk to, to do the dirt work, which we're benefiting from now in being able to go to construction this, this summer. So the inter-local agreement that you, that is being presented is seventy-eight million dollars. Uh, again, that comes from an existing tourism tax. Um, the inter-local. It specifies nineteen and a half million of that coming up front. So as soon as this inter-local's, uh, signed. Nineteen and a half million will go towards that first phase of the building construction, that ticketing and baggage, as well as the design for the rest of the building. Um, and then after that, over the next fifteen years, they've committed. Um, up again for a total of seventy-eight million. Now, this part. Um, in the inter-local, if you've read through it, it anticipates a bond of some sort, a revenue bond that's backed by these dollars from the county. Where the city ends up bonding, using this as the, the backing. Um, and we've worked in the inter-local agreement, the coverages that we need to ensure the most advantageous rates and all of those things that I don't fully understand, but Dan Follett and John Borget do. Um, also our bonding attorneys were involved in that. Um, or the county may choose to, to pull the bond and just issue us a check upfront. Um, and the goal is to get the most amount of money into construction and reduce the interest burden on that bond. And so. That's part of why you see such a big front chunk upfront is initially we started, well, if we do a twenty-year bond, it's. You know, we were paying twenty-four million dollars in interest, which that hurts, and that takes away a third of your funding. And so. The county's been excellent to work with in leaving that option open. Um, so that we can figure that out over the next.
Of that startup period. So that that market can mature. And those seats get filled. And once those seats are getting filled. Then when, when we stop offering that incentive. They're still okay because now their planes are full. Rather than half full.
Sixty six cents, what does that translate into per month?
Per month? Well, we're about forty thousand in payments a month, so. I'm not very quick, twenty four thousand a month. That we're offering in incentives. But again. The five that will be left after June have all been added this year, that's. Dulles with Breeze, that's DFW with Breeze, DFW with American, Phoenix with American. So all brand new routes all. Are driving insane amount of passengers into the airport right now, so. With that, this is just kind of a site plan of the terminal expansion, so um. You can see plans are to expand the. The parking lots as well, we get a lot of comments on the gravel parking lots, which. For good reason, right? Um. It's still funny to me, there's a ton of about three hundred stalls that are never parked in that are paved. On the south end of the, of the parking lot. Um, I guess the perception is it's closer to park in the gravel, but anyway. Needless to say, we know that's a big part of what we need to do with expansion is improve all of the facilities, not just the terminal. So. Beginning. In April, we'll actually go to construction on the north and south apron expansion, so that project's out to bid currently. We're estimating that's about a thirty million dollar project. Um, you all approved an appropriation or or at least the receipt of a loan from UDOT. Uh, what was it two weeks ago? Uh, which will go with about twelve million dollars of FAA funding to to start the construction of that project. Um, soon after that, you'll see um, the expansion of the building. Begin to take place. Um, we've spit split that expansion. Uh, anyway, here's a rendering of what that building might look like, we're not quite done. Uh, but we've split the expansion up into a, into a couple of phases and part of that's because of funding. We have strings attached to some of the FAA funding, which. Which has a a due date to be spent. And so, does this have a laser pointer on it? Okay, sure, yeah, so. So we we've split off this area of the project, which is our ticketing and baggage screening area. Um, as kind of a standalone project in the eyes of the FAA. One, it's small enough, we can get the design plans done, awarded to a contractor and started building. In time to meet those funding deadlines and two, that's the choke point of our, our operation right now. Behind the apron expansion. Soon after that, um. We'll, we'll be in the design of the terminal itself, the rest of the terminal. So here's, here's kind of the upper level, your typical airport concourse is on both the north and south end. Um, let me go back a slide. You'll see on the bottom level on the extreme south end, which is the right side of the page, we're. We're currently planning for uh. Providing space for custom and border patrol, we've talked about Provo International Airport. Um, so right now, that's kind of the last priority of the expansion, um, as far as finishing that space out. Um, if our money goes far enough and if we're successful at the state and and in other places. We'll go ahead and finish that space out to accommodate for. Customs and board troll. Um, something of note, this bottom level. You'll see. On the north side, it's a lot of baggage handling system. Um, we're designing the facility to accommodate. Full blown at capacity operations at ten gates. But we're not building the baggage system to that point right now, because. That baggage system alone is about nineteen million dollars. And so, we're building the space to accommodate it. But we'll build the system itself in phases so that we're, we're not overbuilding, um. Because it will take us a number of years to to grow into that. But we are designing the systems to plug and play so that we don't uh, end up. Spending money now that we can't take advantage of in the future, so. And then, on the south side, a lot of that ground level is actually. Shell space for airline operations, um, lease space. Where we can make revenue, um, in addition to our normal airline operations. Uh, so it's, it's rentable space by our tenants at the, at the terminal. Um, so this, this just phases out the entire project a little bit, again, total projects about a hundred and forty million dollars. Um, I'll show you kind of where that money's coming from, um. Uh, but, but again, first phase are are one and two, the apron. Phase three, the baggage and ticketing, and then we just go into the rest of the site. We've got to move rental car. Uh, facilities to accommodate the expansion on the south side, um. So we're pretty excited about uh, getting this project going. And and moving forward, I don't know where that arrow came from, did I do that? Anyway. Pay no attention to the arrow, I don't want it this. This is a rough project timeline, and let me, let me stress that it's rough. Um, right now, you'll see that the, the terminal apron, which we talked about, we anticipate construction beginning in the next. Uh, six weeks. And that will be completed um. Before. Hard winter, I guess, um. That's gonna be a push to get that much work done in, in one construction season. And then, that first phase of the building, you can see we anticipate starting construction around. Um. Well, for the FAA, we have to have a guaranteed maximum price by middle of May. So essentially a bid from a contractor by the middle of May. And hopefully start construction in about August timeframe. The rest of the building. Um, it's a much longer design process, there's a lot of um. Building to or designing to our budget, um, so that we're making sure that the funds that we have. Set aside for the project actually were able to build it, so. Um, we have about a hundred and thirty two million dollars in place now. Funding years, those vary, and so we've talked previously about. interim funding steps, for example, the, the SIB loan from UDOT. We anticipate one more chunk, um. Where some of the timing of, of some of these funds. It, it gets difficult to cash flow the project, and so we're gonna be exploring different options of how to do that, but. The, the big story in this is why we're here today is that seventy eight million dollar contribution from the county. Um, so. What that consists of, um, I wanna. I wanna stress the county's already put in. Four point three million plus ten million. Prior to the seventy eight million, so they put in four point three million on the initial terminal project. Ten million, we're two years in on that deal, so we still have three point four million remaining. We used six point six million of that first ten million chunk to, to do the dirt work, which. We're benefiting from now in being able to go to construction this, this summer. So the interlocal agreement that you, that is being presented is seventy eight million dollars. Uh, again, that comes from an existing tourism tax. Um. The interlocal. It specifies nineteen and a half million of that coming up front, so as soon as this interlocals uh, sign. Nineteen and a half million will go towards that first phase of the building construction. That ticketing and baggage, as well as the design for the rest of the building. Um, and then after that, over the next fifteen years, they've committed. Um, up again, for a total of seventy eight million. Now this part. Um, in the interlocal, if you've read through it, it anticipates a bond of some sort, a revenue bond that's backed by these dollars from the county. Where the city ends up bonding. Using this as the, the backing. Um, and we've worked in the interlocal agreement, the coverages that we need to ensure the most. Advantageous rates and all of those things that I don't fully understand, but Dan Follett and John Borget do. Um, also our bonding attorneys were involved in that. Um, or the county may choose to, to pull the bond and just issue us a check upfront. Um, and the goal is to get. The most amount of money into construction and reduce the interest burden on that bond, and so. That's part of why you see such a big front chunk upfront. Is initially we started, well, if we do a twenty year bond, it's. You know, we were paying twenty four million dollars in interest, which. That hurts, and that takes away a third of your funding, and so. The county's been excellent to work with in leaving that option open. Um. So that we can figure that out over the next twelve months as we progress through the design, who's gonna bond, how much are we gonna bond for and what? Hopefully those interest rates come down, so that we can put more money to construction. The other part of this presentation is the actual appropriation of the nineteen and a half million so that we can spend it, and so. Um, again, next, in two weeks, that'll be two separate um, items on, on, on the agenda, so. With that. Any questions?
Councillor Poggin.
Okay, so tax and tourism dollars. Is that like a tax on hotel rooms or?
Yes. Hotel rooms, restaurants, rental cars. And I don't know all of the other parts, but, but yes. The county pulls in, would you say, Jimmy, about fourteen million a year? Anyway.
Okay, so.
So this by no means takes.
Just a little.
It's a chunk.
Cause I was worried if our sales taxes starting to go down, their travel and tourism dollars.
Yeah, this is a, this is not even a third of their annual, I, I mean, it's, it's a small percentage.
Is this contract? Guarantee us this, so even if it goes down, we're like the first to be paid out?
Yes. So a lot of that was anticipated, um. With liens and other things that we were the first lien, anyway. And again, some of those things I don't understand, but our finance folks do, so. Um.
And. This, is this contract that we're entering into does not make sure that we're guaranteed that money no matter what?
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, the county could go bankrupt, right, but there, it's a legal obligation to pay us that amount of money every year. It's not contingent upon. And bringing in that amount of tourism taxes, an obligation to pay them.
So if, if they only get three million in, they'd have to find. Nine hundred thousand someplace else to give to.
Right, and, and, and specifically to, to Brian Torgerson's earlier point. Uh, specifically because of the contemplation that there will be bonding. They are obligated to. Not. Um, obligate their. Their other tourism tax dollars in a way that limits the ability and to. Satisfy the bonding requirements for this, and, and actually, they even have to. On an annual basis, set aside. An amount. There's this thing called two times coverage, where the bonding agencies require that they. You to demonstrate you actually have twice as much money as needed to pay. So every year, they actually have to set aside double what they're gonna pay for us until the bonding agency clears them, and then they get the rest back. They have to set that aside.
Thank you.
Isaac, are there any other um, concerns that, or issues expressed by the legislators that we should be aware of?
Oh, good. Let me think, good question. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was concerned that we might, you know, there was a concern that why aren't we like Salt Lake, Salt Lake built that whole thing off. Airline generated revenues. The re- the most recent expansion. Um. And we concede we are not as strong and financially viable as Salt Lake's airport. Um.
Yet.
Yet, thank you. Um. And I haven't gone back and looked, but I would be surprised to find that they haven't. Had incentives along the way somewhere and, and some state help along the way. And their concern really is just, do we give more money, they've given us money in the past, every time we've asked, the state has come through with money. And there are a lot of priorities and it's a very tight fiscal year, so there were some members of the committee that were. Thinking other things were a bigger priority than this and pushing back on. Giving more money to our airport at this time, um, so. That is what it is.
Okay.
Um. We frankly, traditionally. Um. Have not succeeded because the committee put us top of the list. We've succeeded later in whatever happens up there at the Hill, and so the fact that. There was some committee pushback is not a new experience for us, um. You have a committee of legislators who have all kinds of priorities and hear about all the needs of the state all day, every day. And here comes a group that says. Provo Airport and some of them say, I love it, and some of them say, I don't. I, I think there's other more important, I think there are other more important things, so that's how I interpreted the discussion. And. The worst they can do. Is not give us this year's requested money, so that's what the, that's what the committee was wrestling with is. Where do things fit in priority and? So we took a few tough questions and. Comments, but um, that is what it is.
Very thankful, then, thanks for that helpful reply.
Yes. And while, if I can just say one more thing while I'm at it. In case it hasn't been said enough. Well, of course, we just, we appreciate the county, but those of us who've been involved have just been. Um, so impressed with how even this little detail that Brian just shared of two times cover. Uh, double coverage in your bank account. That's something that the county thrust upon us as something that would get us a lower interest rate. We, we want to, we want to encumber more of our funds. To help you get a better interest rate, we want to give you nineteen million upfront since that will save you. They are just bending over backwards in remarkable ways, every time we met with them, I feel like we came away with a better deal that we didn't ask for. They thought of some other way to help. So I just, thanks for letting me take one moment to just go. Wow, this was amazing, and they've been just amazing to us.
Great, thank, thank you, Isaac.
Yes, Councillor Holman.
Since I'm all about dumb questions today, I just wanna understand, we're getting this money and then we're just allocating it. Right, I mean, this money's coming in and now we're allocating, or we're, the point of this is allocated, right?
So.
Or did I misunderstand?
Currently. The only money that's being transferred is nineteen and a half million, so upon signing of the interlocal agreement, which you'll approve in two weeks. Assuming you do. Um, nineteen and a half million will come immediately, well, well. Within the processing time and that it takes.
And then we're allocating that nineteen and a half.
And then, and then the other item is you're appropriating that, that allows us to spend it. Yeah, future, now, if the city ends up bonding. If it, if it's determined that it's, it's the best option for the city to bond. Backed with county dollars, it's all spelled out in the interlocal agreement, we'll have to come back and get your approval for a bond. If the county decides to bond. You've already approved that, right? Um, and so. There's some nuances to that, that, that if we are the ones that end up bonding, you'll be, we'll be back to make sure that you're, you're. All aware and approve of that bond.
I just wanted to understand at a high level where the nineteen and a half million is coming from.
Yep, so.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Brian. Thanks for the update and presentation. Next, we have a discussion regarding attainable and owner occupied housing. That'll be presented by Jed Nielsen. Who is President and CEO of Nielsen Homes. Jed, right up here, nice to have you with us, thank you for coming.
Good.
Best beer we've had in here in a long time.
You know, you just need to let it grow a little bit longer. Give it a day or two and you'll pass me up. So are you ready for me?
Yes, go right ahead, Jed.
Okay, so here we go, here's my clicker.
Yes.
All right. Fast and easy. Well, so you heard, my name's Jed Nielsen, um, I own Nielsen Homes, uh. We're a home builder based mainly in Weber and Davis County for now, um, although we're. Expanding our, the concept that you'll hear about today, we're expanding that all across the state. And we wanted to talk to you about, um. People who are getting the first home at last, that, uh, as you all know. This, uh, this generation, um. Is. Faced with a new challenge, where my generation was not faced with, and really, it's the first generation to be faced with this challenge. So you can see some of the statistics here, Utah ranked number five worst state to find a starter home. Um, one of the, uh, the least affordable places to buy a home in the US. You've probably heard most of these statistics, but we wanted to just remind you of those. Um, the Utah ranks third in the nation for most unaffordable housing market behind Hawaii and California. I never thought that that would happen ever, we used to go to Hawaii and. Be blown away by the price of housing, now here we are. Um. So. There's multiple challenges to, to overcome with this, um. Number one is Utah has the largest median home size, is anybody aware of that? That, that seems to be a statistic that gets skipped over. Um, but it's something like on average, or the median home size in Utah is like twenty eight hundred square feet. And the second state is clear down to like twenty one hundred square feet. And so, um, it isn't just our market that's causing the problem. Part of the problem is the size of the homes we've built have just always been larger. Um, the next one is, there's obviously a, a shortage of housing units, and so. Um, you can see here, hopefully at the bottom, I don't know if I've got a pointer. But in twenty twenty four, we have a thirty seven thousand. Housing unit shortage, so, uh. That's. Whereas, you know, historically, um. We had an oversupply of homes. Uh, by a little bit, um, now we have a big undersupply of homes. Um, and then, obviously, uh. People are being priced out of homeownership, um, fewer than twelve percent of homes sold in Utah in twenty twenty two were affordable to people earning the median income. So. Twelve percent, that's, that's pretty brutal. Um. So, let's talk about how things used to be, it used to be that if you. Went to school and you got a degree and you got a job, then you'd go buy a home. And now. This becomes, this is the new home, or mom and dad's basement, or somebody you don't know. And you're renting their basement. And so, it's changed significantly. On the right hand side, there's a, a statistic that I'm going to read this, cause it's, it's a fairly complicated one, this is from Kim Gardner. Um, the report of the state of Utah's housing market from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. And it says, one measure of housing affordability is the median multiple, which is a price to income ratio of the median house price. Divided by the median household income. So from two thousand, two thousand eighteen, the median multiple in Utah was under four. So housing was moderately unaffordable. But by twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the ratio moved up to, uh, to the four point one to five point O range. Which they consider seriously unaffordable. By twenty one, two, two, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. The acceleration in price increases pushed the median multiple. To five point six one and, uh, by twenty twenty two to six point two six. Signifying a severely unaffordable housing market. Then, and I just wanna, um, make it clear, that has nothing to do with what interest rates did. That's just simply home price and median home price and median income, so in twenty twenty two. Interest rates tripled almost and, um, have made that even more unaffordable. So, um. Because of this problem, the governor became very aware that the, the. Our entire state of Utah economy. Is at risk if we don't fix this problem, and so. Um, he came out with this initiative. Uh, that we would build, that the state would build thirty five thousand starter homes. Um, in the next five years, everybody heard of this initiative, I'm hoping so in the news. Um. And, uh, yeah, here he goes, his quote is, I believe the price of housing is the greatest threat to our prosperity. We cannot allow an entire generation to never own a home. We must build starter homes again. Today, I'm proposing the largest starter home initiative in the country, our kids deserve this and we must build. And, um. Our team at Nielsen Homes, uh, clear sense. You know, before, it was probably about in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We set out on a, a big wild goal that we would at some point be able to innovate the way that we build homes. Um, in a way that they could be affordable on a single income. Because, um, I just, I found when, when my wife and I had children and she was able to quit her job. I realized what a blessing that was and that that's not an opportunity for everyone. And so, to, for people to have the choice, uh, to not. Have to work or to, for single parents to. Um, to be able to afford a home, we thought that was a big deal, and then, of course, in twenty twenty. The goalposts got moved, and then it got moved again in twenty twenty two and just keeps getting harder and harder. But when, um, so when I heard that the governor was coming out with this initiative. Our team went to work to say, okay, here's what, here's what the initiative is. How can we make an impact? And, um. This, uh, rendering on the left is just to signify, um. A home, that was my starter home, the first home I purchased. Was in East Ogden, um. It's, uh, it's in a much older community, I'm sure the home was built, you know, in the forties or fifties. And, um, when I moved out of it, it became a rental home. And in twenty, early twenty twenty two, I decided to sell that home and it sold for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it was a nine hundred square foot, two bed, one bath. Bungalow with a detached one car garage. That with the size of today's car, cars was more like a. Two motorcycle garage and it sold for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so, um, and then I put this as an example on the right hand side. That when I started. Um, as a realtor, working in model homes, selling homes for Nelson Homes. This was our most popular floor plan back in nineteen ninety nine to two thousand and three. And, uh, it's probably tough to read, but it had what, eleven hundred and thirty four square feet finished? And just a two car garage? And this was just normal, like, the, we didn't have. People showing up to city councils to protest that we were building these small homes on small lots. This was just a starter home, and I worked at the model home there. And people that had graduated high school and. Some hadn't even, I, I mean, I was selling homes to people in college, so they were able to go to college. And have jobs and afford that house. And it was their start. And now we have situations where people, you have, I'm seeing, I'm noticing the look, that it's like. You know, you can be graduated from college into your career. You can have, you know, a spouse that. Has also done the same and you still can't afford that house, let alone. For the longest time, we stopped building these homes because of low interest rates and everything got bigger and bigger and bigger, and now. That the prices, uh, spiked and the interest rates spiked. Now we get this reaction that it's, it's impossible, right? So, um. We looked at. What could Nelson Homes do to make a difference and? So we thought, well, let's bring back the starter home, that starter home that I bought. That was built in the forties or the starter homes that, that I used to sell in the early two thousands. Um, let's bring it back, and so. Over the last, um. Over the last fourteen months. We went to work on what would it look like if we could get local, local municipalities. To allow us to build starter homes again. And, um. The, the thing that I want to, to express today, one of the key things is that it required every stakeholder to have an interest in doing. That if we would have gone to Weber County and said, hey, we want to build starter homes. And, and that's going to require, um, smaller lots. Um, some people like to call that density, some people hate that word, but it is just what it is. That, uh, we need to build smaller lots and we need to build smaller homes. The, the, uh, the county there had to have the courage to be willing to approve that kind of development. Um, it obviously required the builder developer to be willing to. Build something smaller, which means I'm going to charge a lower price. Which means I'm gonna make less profit. Um, we worked on the, the House Bill five seventy two money where that requires banks to make a little less money. And, and so it just required everybody to, to be engaged and say, okay, we have a big problem. It requires a big solution and let's have everybody work on it together. Um. So. I'm going to show you what we came up with. And let's hope this works, do you know how to play the video? Or will it just play, oh, here we go. So, this is what we've created, what you're looking at here is the first round of starter homes under the governor's initiative. There, um, you're only seeing two floor plans. But hopefully it won't appear as though it's just two floor plans. Um, there's, there's a single level one that we're looking at right here. And then a two story that you've seen a few of so far, and, um. They, they all have, so each floor plan has four different architectural styles. Um, but the floor plan itself stays the same and that helps us build the, the plan at an affordable price. Um. The, uh, you know, we're showing this to you while it's under construction, so it will look much prettier once it's finished. Um, but when it's finished, we will have installed all of the landscaping. And, um, all of the fencing, and so. The, the people that are, um, purchasing these homes. Will move in to something fully finished inside and out, and the, the county or the city in your case. Doesn't have to worry that five years later, there's no yards installed. Or you won't have to get involved with issues with fence lines and. People fighting over fences and some of the things that happen. And, um. We just wanted to show. Our, our county. And we just wanted to show our, our counties that we would build something that they would be proud of and then show the rest of the state that it can be done and it can be done in a way that looks beautiful and amazing.
So fully finished, including basement?
Well, the first twelve, we are not able to do basements because of the water table. The future ones will have basements, but we'll actually leave those unfinished intentionally. Because we want to hit the lowest price point possible. And where the governor wanted sweat equity, he said, if there's something that the, that the homeowner can do to, to add value later, we want that done. The historical way of doing sweat equity is while we're building the house, you have the homeowner come and do the roof or come and do the paint. And even back when construction times were much easier, we found that they rarely saved any money doing that. You know, they'd go, they'd go to do the roof. Well, they don't know how to do a roof. And then they, and so they had to buy materials somewhere that they paid a higher price. And then they had to take a week off work so that they could do it. You're laughing. Maybe you've had some experience in that? Okay. It's going to cost extra in the end and take up all your time and all and whatnot. So we wanted to provide areas where they could do, you know, we'll call it sweat equity, but it's sweat equity after they've moved into the home. So they can finish the basement later. In some cases, they'll be able to add a garage later where we'll provide off street parking in a driveway that would go to a future garage site. What else? Lacey was, there's a, those two items, yeah. So.
They per acre, four homes per acre?
I, I want to say it's about six. It's just under six units of the acre. Do you remember the lot sizes? This is Lacey Richards, by the way. She's part of our land development team and used to be a city council member. So she, she knows a lot from both sides.
Yeah. So lots vary on these. These lots are maybe, as you can see, they're oriented to the streets on these. They're alley loaded to those one car garages. So they're a little bit different orientation. Some of the ones that are going to have the future garage sites that are facing the street for the garage, those will be narrower but deeper. So it kind of depends. Total density on this project is somewhere between four and five units per acre. But as Justin and you talked about, we have a wide variety and wide lifespan type of products that average out to.
Yeah. So I, so I think where the, if we were to just condense the starter homes in, in one acre, it hits almost six. But in the community that I'm going to show you, the, the overall layout, it's, it's lower than that because we've got various different product types. So let's show you, just to give you an example of the designs. Here's a home that sold for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Landscaping and fencing included. It's two bedrooms, two baths, one car garage. And I think I've got a video of it. Do I have a video there? So the, I wish I had a layout of show. It actually works out that they do get somewhat of a backside yard without fencing in the front. So the front will look like every other home. But then basically as you get to the, the side of the home, I think this is where the fencing will begin and it'll, oops. But, and it'll go around. And so it's, it's not much of a yard. But we understand that with people with kids or people with dogs, they do want to, to keep them enclosed. So that's how that's going to work. Okay, so let's show you the. So this one's three seventy, includes landscaping and the one car garage. Okay, so now this is the two story design. This one's three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, also a one car garage. And these homes sold for four hundred.
Maybe in the basement or?
This is, that's, that's, that's all the living space. There is no basement on these. In the future phases, there would be a basement that would add probably six or seven hundred square feet to the total. But those, that would be left unfinished and, and that does not include the garage square footage. So, you know, when we've gone to municipalities and they go, oh, you're going to build a house that's eleven hundred square feet and, and fourteen hundred square feet, that's a tiny house. And I'm going, well, back in nineteen ninety nine, you know, I could go back to that slide. That was eleven hundred and thirty four square feet. And that was everywhere. We were doing developments that were a hundred, a hundred and twenty lots each. And a huge percentage of them were homes that were between eleven hundred square feet and fourteen hundred square feet. Yes.
And how, what is the yours? I guess, have you finished one yet?
They're almost finished. They're all sold. So they have, as soon as we put them to market, they sold immediately.
So on your H O A, is there any rules with parking? Obviously people are going to have more than one car, a lot of them. Is there rules of parking or not?
Yes. So maybe to give you some background, when we looked at doing this, I took the whole team, we, we rented a bus and we went on tour because I wanted to show them the neighborhood where I had sold that four hundred and twenty thousand dollar home. And there were a few key factors in what made that a nice community where that we wanted to mimic. Number one was, you know, at this point, all the landscaping was installed. The trees were matured, matured. And so I said, if we're going to do this, we need to include the landscaping. So then came the question of, well, what about we include the landscaping and then let, then people let it die? Let it go bad. And so we said, okay, we've got to have it H way maintained. So we've got to have a professional management company that maintains the, the landscaping so that it's not an option to just let it die off. Because part of that tour, we toured good communities and then we toured communities that I wanted to make sure we didn't. And where I grew up, there was a, just one portion of the community that I lived in that turned out to be terrible. And even when I was a kid, everybody, you know, there was a name for that community. And, and now to this day, it's, it's rotten. And so you drive through there and there's cars parked on what should be the yard and all sorts of things. And so I said, you know, because I'm, I'm born and raised in Utah and I plan on staying here till I die. And I have four kids with one on the way and I want them to all have homes in Utah. And I also, since I'm going to continue to live here, I don't want to build communities that, that then get made fun of, like the one that I'm referring to. I want people to be proud of the, the communities that, that my company built. And so we said, okay, we've, we do need to address parking. And so it's tough to see this, but there's, you've got a a one car garage, but then there's another parking stall right ahead of it. So you could park two there. And then we did an additional parking space. Yeah, there's the arrow. I keep touching accidentally. Adjacent to it. And so if you only had two cars, you could park one in the garage and then one that wouldn't block there, but you could get a total of three.
And, and just for our education, what, what, what's the difference in price if you built a two car garage with that same house?
It would probably add twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to it. Same, you know, same thing. The basements are going to add costs as well. So as we get into the development, you know, we may even choose to not do basements where we can if the prices keep getting you know, too high. Because our, what we want to have is a, is an array of housing between three fifty and four fifty. And, and it was important to us, at one point, they wanted to cap it at four hundred. And I said, okay, you can do that because we can build them to three fifty to four hundred, but then you're going to get rid of a lot of the variation that makes the community feel and look nicer. And so I said, I understand it, that if you move the, the threshold to four fifty and I come in and build every single home at four forty nine nine, then everybody loses. And, and you know, I might win temporarily by making a little extra money, but I'm going to lose by not showing what I promised and not showing something that can be mimicked all across the state. And so having that, that wide price range of three fifty to four fifty is going to allow us to have various different model homes, you know, right? In the first twelve, we only did two, but there will be more. So we can have some that are down at three fifty mark. We're going to have some that'll be four fifty, that'll have two car garages and, and more square footage. That make sense? So this should show the, just a tour. So to me, this kind of mimics the house that I sold for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in East Ogden. That was a constant problem for me with fixing the roof and the HVAC system and all the things. And now we get to build a brand new with all the new latest and greatest finishes. It's, we've had, you know, we're still under construction. Sorry about the blue tape. But we also, we took a, a unique, I feel like it's a unique approach to building these homes. So here's the two story. That we could have, we could have found nickels and dimes that we could save by doing the, the cheapest finishes. We could have done the cheapest flooring, the cheapest countertops, the cheapest cabinets, the cheapest everything, right? And willed away at that price or increased our profit a tiny amount. But what I've discovered, being a home builder for a long time, is you can also, you can also eat away at those little savings by just having mistakes. And so since we're building these homes in the middle of our regular market rate homes, we call them, if, if somebody comes in and installs the wrong countertop in the wrong house and I have to tear it out and replace it, then that just ate away all the savings that I'd get from using the cheaper finishes. And so plus, we wanted these to be nice. There, there's not the intention of going, okay, well, since these are starter homes, then just get what you get. And don't complain about it. It's like they, they can still be built beautiful inside and out. And so, you know, you would see similar kitchens. Well, you'd see the same kitchens, the same finishes in the starter homes as you see in our other homes. And I know, you know, from a city perspective, the inside of the home may not matter what it looks like, but to the buyers and their pride of ownership and how they're going to treat the home and how well the home's going to appreciate over time, those finishes matter. So our concept in how to build these is also very unique. I've taken a lot of criticism for it, that people just don't really understand it because they, the, the theory to most people is, okay, if you're going to build these starter homes, even if you're going to build them in a master plan community, then what you should do is pick a corner, you know, let's pick this back corner that nobody's ever going to see. And let's shove all two hundred and seventy five starter homes back there and, and put all the different homes out in the open. And, but as we drove through these communities like East Ogden and what, like Sugar House, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on some of the names of the different communities that you guys would recognize. But part of what made them such nice communities is the intermingling with a smaller starter home and maybe a, a larger move up home and then a mansion. And everything around it. And it, it not only makes the, the streetscape look much nicer, it's also just better for society. It's better for upward mobility. If the, the kid that lives in the eleven hundred square foot home is friends with the kid that lives in the mansion and they can, they're, it just increases the likelihood of upward mobility. And at Nelson Homes, our, our vision is that we improve lives by creating community with love. And so as we approached this, we said, okay, how do we apply this to starter homes? We can, we can intermingle the starter homes. So what you're seeing here is where there are darker shades, those are the starter homes and the lighter shades are the, the higher priced homes. And so you can have starter homes right next door to a higher priced home. And we, you know, again, a lot of my consultants and different people in the industry said, you're nuts. Nobody's ever going to buy a higher priced home next to a lower priced home. And I said, well, watch me because I think we're going to design them. And so they look the same. They feel the same. And so I just found out last week, the first batch of, of regular priced homes came out. And they're right next to the starter homes that sold for three seventy and four hundred thousand. The first one went for sale and it sold for five hundred and eighty thousand. And their backyard is the backyard of the three hundred and seventy thousand dollar home. And so, and if you look at older neighborhoods, this, this is only a, a recent thing where we had all this income segregation that you have to put, you know, this priced home here and this priced home there. Back in the day where I sold that home for four hundred and twenty thousand, it's all intermingled. And so it looks much nicer. It feels much nicer. It's better for society building on and on and on. Go ahead.
Yeah, like this chart. And I was, I had two questions about it. The yellowish colors without anything on them. Because that can be the townhomes. They're just not bad like you're, you know?
Okay, yes. So there are, there are some townhomes in here. Oh, the yellow. So that is parks and open spaces. So these are going to be townhomes?
Now, what about this white spot?
This one?
Yes.
That looks like maybe somebody messed up the ending. Or we don't know yet. Okay. Keep touching the screen, I'm like, I gotta put fingerprints on the screen.
So that's why they look more.
That's why they look more dense because there is open space. So the overall density, the overall density might only be four or five units per acre, but there's, there's really on an acre, probably six or something like that.
Yeah, so there's a thousand homes total. And I don't know if you guys heard the history of this. What happened is we, we, this is in the county and it's in between two cities. And when we went to get our entitlements, this city said no, that city said no. We went back to the county and they said, go back to the cities. We went back. They said, okay, we'll give you six hundred homes. Went to the other city. They said, we'll give you six hundred homes. And we went back to the county and they said, we'll give you seven twenty five. And so we went with seven twenty five. And then the governor came out with his initiative. And, and when he made the announcement, it was kind of a small room of home builders and, and developers. And I came prepared with a plot map to show him if we took this seven hundred and twenty five to a larger number, what it would do to the price point of the homes there. And so he appointed Steve Waldrop to help him on with this housing initiative. And he came and met with us and, and I, I told him the concept. And, and he said, is it too late to fix it? And I said, well, it's too late for us. We already have our entitlements. But maybe if the governor gets involved, we can change that. And so we went back to the county and said, if you'll give us additional units, then we'll make these units starter homes. And so they gave us the additional two hundred and seventy five units. And so we had to reconfigure the development. I took a big risk since we already had the entitlement. We just started putting in the roads in the first phase. And because I wanted to show quick progress. And so we said, okay, we'll put in the roads. And if we get the reentitlement, then we'll build starter homes there. If we don't, then we'll build regular homes there. And we got the, the entitlement in July of last year and we started the starter homes in like late August or September. And then, and so we were able to get, by the time the governor did his press conference, the end of October, we had most of them framed up and you could see them in the background. But it did take a lot. I want to make sure that I hit the key points. So we talked about architecture is a key component. Amenities in the community are a key component. We feel like integrating the different sizes and, and price ranges of homes is a key component. One of the things that I've noticed in a lot of low price developments is it just feels like you drive in and on each side of the street, there's a wall of garages with, with windows up above. And so you kind of feel enclosed in here, but having some vertical variation where you have single story and two story. And where maybe the garages aren't always front and center, so you can get them on the side if they're on a corner or tucked behind if it's a detached garage on the homes that we'll sell that don't have a garage at all, they can have a detached one later. Did I cover everything, Lacey? Did I hit all of it?
Well, Jeff, this development is in East Ogden.
This, I'm sorry, this development is in Weber County, just west of I fifteen. At the furthest north end of Weber County. So it's in between Plain City and Far West.
Okay.
And I keep referring to East Ogden because that's where I sold that one, one hundred and twenty thousand. And that's where we, we did the bus tour to say, let's mimic this.
And what about land costs? Do you, have you had to look for land far outside the city to be able to make that fit your model?
The land cost, that is a big challenge. Where it worked out for us was we, we purchased the land at a cost that would work at a lower density. And so then when we got the bonus density of the two hundred and seventy five units, that's where I was willing to say, if you give me that extra density, then I'll, I'll do it at a lower price. And I know that's, that's a challenge for cities because a lot of times the developers are just saying, hey, give me the density no matter what. And, and I get that, but I felt like if I could get the, the higher density, then that allowed me to make a difference in my state and. Then that allowed me to make a difference in my state and offer this. Cuz these homes would all sell for at least fifty to seventy five grand more than what we're selling for. But they wouldn't exist. If the county wouldn't have given us the extra density. And so, you know, I I jokingly say, uh, some of my consultants and advisors, their heads have just spun like, what have you, what are you doing here? Like? You can't have the government tell you what price you can sell your homes for. And I'm like, well. The government tells me how many I can build. And so if they tell me I can build extra ones. Then I'm willing to to make less money on them because. Now I'm solving a problem um for my state and for the kids and grandkids of. My friends and family and my own kids and all that.
Um, we, you know, obviously we're in a lot of land trouble. But we offer density, you know, and significant density where we want to like get condos or townhomes for sale. And developers often just say, oh, that won't pencil. What are, we do believe that pencils, we're trying to pencil the percentage they want for. Babe. Like, what are questions that we should be asking to figure out that really?
Um. Lacy, what would be some good questions?
Good question. Um. There's different components, as you know, that go into that pricing and that that competition doesn't pencil. Land price is a good one, but horizontal development costs or just getting to where you've got utilities, roads. That's a big cost. Um. And that kid, you can look at two pieces of land and say. Most of the big deal, why are you telling me there's some pencils and there's some level? A lot of that has to do with that infrastructure, you know, did I have to go twenty six feet feet to tie into the sewer there? Did I have to install a lift station? Did I have to bring the power from half a mile down the road? Or upgrade the power, you know, upgrade the water line or something? So each one, I wish I could give you a simple answer. But the component you're looking at is the land price. Another one honestly is the carry price. So if it takes eighteen months to get city approval on something.
Yeah.
Working is just not right all the time.
Mm hmm. And I I would say this, this. Sounds counterintuitive for a developer to say out loud, but um. You know, cuz it cuz there's been a push from the developers to say. Just give us uh, just tell us where. We can get the highest density. And then we'll go chase it. Um, and the challenge with that is. The land seller. Then goes, ah, ta-da, I've got, I've got land that hits the highest density. And so there goes the land price and there there it makes, so it doesn't pencil anymore. Versus um. If. If the the zoning is at a lower density and the seller is okay selling it at that lower density. And then if the developer can come into the city and say, okay. If you, if you keep us, if you keep us at the low density, this pencils, I've got it under contract and I'll build bigger homes and bigger lots or whatever. But if you are willing to give me higher density. Then you can start to work out kind of a negotiation like we did with Weber County.
So I love the American dream approach here. Um. Because that's the way you build equity. That's the way you build a future for family. And what keeps an investor coming in and buying up most of this? An institutional investor and it all turns into vendors.
Perfect. So um, it's funny, we we basically sat, we went through the checklist of like, what can make this go bad? And and kind of the first thing that can make it go bad is if we go sell it to a bunch of institutional investors. And so um. We've, we've put on these starter homes a ten year deed restriction that they have to be owner occupied. There's been a lot of debate on that. I was like, I'm okay if you do it a hundred years or fifty years or whatever it is. Um, there's, there's an argument that even if you did it for one year. That would scare away most institutional uh purchasers because. You you don't sell, you don't build all two hundred and seventy five and then sell them. And so the investor could just wait a year. You're selling one at a time, at a time, at a time. And. And so the thought that all of them would go sell a year later, it's just gonna scare most of them away.
So these do have a ten year restriction.
Ten year deed restriction.
And so uh. Specifically, how does that deed restriction work? So if uh. Anyone who live, is that through the HOA or is, I I'd obviously record on the deed. I'm just wondering. So what keeps it from becoming a rental?
Okay, so. And Lacy, you might have to make sure that, or go ahead and take.
So, yeah, we did a ten year deed restriction for owner occupancy. We were kind of giving a situation with Weber County. Because they said, we don't want to touch this. We, we agree with you, it should be a requirement. And it wasn't like they were twisting our arm. We said, yeah, we also. But they didn't wanna manage it through the housing authority. I think some municipalities would choose that option. That that wasn't. Weber County is in kind of an odd place in this neighborhood, third of them. Babe. So they don't wanna manage it. So the HOA agreed to say, yeah, we'll put it in the CCNR and the county can audit us. And we can have to go to and say, yeah, we hold all the deed restrictions. They're still enforced on these properties. And it will be complacent.
So, you know, there. I guess there has to be a certain level of trust that the county trusts us that when we sell the home. That we verify that it's gonna be homeowner occupied. But um. This is gonna sound like I'm. Oh, good. Yes. So they they have to sign an affidavit. But also I've found that no one. Monitors communities like HOAs monitor themselves. And it just happens, like one hundred percent of the HOAs that we build. Ends up having two or three people that are in charge. Um, and they they drive the community. I mean. I've got a home in St. George. That there is a woman that she's in charge of the HOA and she literally, she walks the community every day. And her husband follows her around and is in his razor, little ranger thing. And she, she gets home and she mails out all the fines for for everything. And that is, that is every, in every HOA. And so. We we determined if you're living in an HOA and you know that you're not able to rent.
Yeah.
And then you see your neighbor. Uh, all of a sudden is renting it. You're gonna turn him in and then the HOA is gonna have fines and. Um, consequences for that. So. You know, I think that if the HOA just ran amok and went crazy, then the county could could get involved, but we didn't want to put that on the count. Sorry, I saw two. Go ahead.
I, and I just wanna finish by saying. Bravo.
Oh, thank you.
Bravo. That's fabulous.
Thanks. Yeah. Thank you. We we decided that if if we could make sure that the home, the architecture of the home looks nice. The landscaping looks nice. It's professionally maintained. And it doesn't turn into rental land cuz that that neighborhood that I'm telling you about where I grew up, um. I bet you it's one hundred percent rentals. And so the yards you drive through in the summer and there isn't one yard in the whole neighborhood that's alive. It's just dead. Usually as cars parked in there. And so I just refuse to build something like that.
So I've been hearing that uh banks are less likely to loan uh. When there are developments that are requiring homeownership. Would that only be the case with? Uh, multifamily units? I mean, these, if if a single family detached, even though they're smaller and they're higher density. Is this easier for banks to accept as a project that's a hundred percent owner occupied? And is it also, am I correct in that other assumption that if you have multifamily? Units and then you say we, cuz we've been talking to developers about wanting certain percentages of home homeownership. And sometimes we get the no pencil. Uh, which should never have been made into a verb. Sorry, I just. Just bothered me. But anyway, sometimes we get that argument or or we've been hearing, um, you know, the banks actually are just not as willing to lend to projects that are. Having those mixed requirements.
What, what do you know about? Two scenarios that I could think of that that might apply to, um, one in my condo buildings. Uh, I think. Um, they'll only, you can only get FHA loans up to fifty percent. And so then the other fifty percent, you've got to basically find cash buyers. Um, unless you're in higher priced condos, which are. You know, more risky where they might be able to get a a higher percentage of conventional loans. The other scenario that I could see there being challenges on lending is if the deed restriction goes beyond the homeowner occupied. So. I've heard of developments that there's, there's a deed restriction. That it has to be owner occupied, but also when you sell it. You can only sell it, it can only appreciate it like three percent a year or something like that. And so. A bank um might be, and I don't know if they are, but they might be less. Likely to lend money on something that they know has a limited ability to appreciate because. If all the homes around it are appreciating a ten percent a year. And this one's appreciating at three percent a year. Then their asset doesn't gain as much value as as another asset. But I haven't heard that they that they won't win.
It's the first one you said.
It's the first one. It's usually condos.
And we sat down with our lending partners cuz we started with a lot of these same questions. And they were great. We sat down with them and asked them that question and said, hey, can you tell us, is this gonna affect the ability for people to get loans? And they said, no, we have no problem with the fees.
Yeah, really, the only reason we landed at ten years cuz I I was saying, well, let's do it for fifty years. And everybody else was saying, do it for one year, zero years cuz they thought it was high risk. And I'm like, I don't, I don't see the risk. Where they convinced me to to limit it to ten years is they said, most financial markets work in ten year increments. And so. Since this is the first one and. Everybody, you know, we just need to test it out, but um. We haven't found a lender so that has had any kind of problem with this. Cuz all that happens is when they go to sell it. The person that buys it has to also occupy it. That's it.
Love that.
So it truly is accomplishing the American dream, the real.
Yeah.
Historical American dream. You buy this house. You live in it until you outgrow it. You sell this house, you take your equity. There's your start. And then you go put it towards the next one and then the next person comes and buys it and they just have to live in it. And and so really, the only, the only um. Property right that we're restricting. Would be the person that, and this is very rare, that you, on your starter home. That between when you buy your starter home and when you go to buy your next home. You're making so much money that you can afford to keep your starter home and rent it. Um, I was able to do that cuz I was in. In a sales, you know, I I bought it early and. And my career really expanded and so I kept it and I'm in real estate. So I, I knew that I could keep it and rent it, but. The vast majority of people sell their starter home.
Yeah.
So that's really the only downside from a property rights perspective.
Well, Jed, thank you. This has been very helpful and educational.
Can I tell you one last thing that has been a key component? Sorry, I got hung up on different things, but um. We also did a priority pre-sell. So uh, we we worked with attorneys and everybody to make sure this was legal, but. The uh, before we just put it onto the open market, it goes out to um first time buyers. First responders. Teachers and active military. So they get a, they get a two week period that those groups get the first shot at it. And we figured that increased the likelihood that it went to.
Yeah.
Could you do that kind of thing with um? And say like a big year employee of. Public safety.
So we looked at that and go ahead, Lacy, you were heavily involved in that.
It's that, the county chose not to, but we were told it's possible. Yeah, the county chose not to cuz they're like, oh, there's like, this got on the eyes on the first time, whatever, like, let's just not. But yeah, absolutely. Sometimes it's municipal employees are included.
Yeah, we basically covered most of that. So.
Thank you again, Jed. We appreciate your helpful presentation and time here. We'll reach out if we have additional questions. We've struggled with these kinds of issues like most municipalities.
Yes. Yeah, I I feel bad for you of what you guys have to deal with. And so hopefully this can be a good solution.
It certainly is. Thank you again. Thank you, Jed. Next, we have a discussion regarding. Impacts of proposed legislation on transportation utility funds. Presented by. Our department, our public works director, Gordon Haidt.
Yeah, I'm just gonna give the brief introduction and he can get the opportunity to, or Vern. Get the opportunity to do the uh presentation. Um, last year, the council had a lot of interest in the TUF, particularly in making sure that. Um, the fee was distributed fairly to all the property owners in Provo. There was discussion about looking at various uses of it. And then some legislation came up, uh, it didn't pass. And we were ready to come back um. To present this year. Um, but um. Isaac has been working closely with the league in trying to. Make sure that this works well for all the municipalities, particularly Provost's interests, which are very unique. And so today we're just going to give an introduction of some of the things that are happening with the bills. And then next month we'll be bringing you the actual study. So. Turn time over to Vern to go over that.
Thanks, Gordon. Short agenda today. We're gonna talk about House Bill four fifty four, Senate Bill three ten, and then their potential impact to Provo City and what that means. Um, so lots of language here. Uh, this first bill, House Bill four fifty four. Is sponsored by Representative Karen Peterson. She also sponsored the similar legislation last year. They made it to about two days before the legislative session and that was not voted upon. Um, it really codifies, if you will, the. The. Ability for cities to have transportation utility fees. Within the state code. Right now, it's just been approved legally through the court system. Um, it requires a a process that's transparent and there's some public noticing requirements and. There's different fees for users that you can and classifications that you can do. Um, in this particular one that's a little new this year. Talks about houses of worship. And that um, if the users generate. The facilities that are three days or fewer, then they could have a lower rate. Um. So that's something that we we need to look at. Um, it will expire after ten years before another study is required. Uh, annual report to state auditor. Um, and then TUF is, in this bill is subject to a local referendum. It does include capital projects, so I won't be very upfront. Provo City historically has been purist. We only use it for maintenance and that's all we're proposing next month when we come before you, but that will be. Uh, an opportunity for you to take a look at. Also prohibits town from imposing broadband and public safety service fees. Now, that is. Out, it it's in the bill. But it's outside the scope of the transportation utility fees. So please understand that they're kind of sneaking that in with the. With the bill as some of these do. Uh, the league's position is they do support the bill. Isaac's been working with Utah League of Cities and Towns. Keeps us informed on on what is happening there and their support or lack of support for a particular bill. Where this one's at right now is the third reading for the House bills and waiting vote. Uh, it did receive a vote, received favorable vote out of the committee. So that is that bill. The second bill, the Senate Bill three ten. And this one is by Brady Bam- Brammer. Um, this one does, the biggest one, is exempts religious nonprofit organizations from paying the transportation utility fee. That is the big difference of this bill. So all churches. And all religious. Nonprofit properties would be exempt from the transportation utility bill. So we gotta keep that in mind. Um. This talks about some of the features. I mean, it's it's capital projects, much like the other one sidewalks, curb and gutter. New, old, it doesn't matter. It's all listed in there. Um, and then finally, um, they have the same or they have rates and classifications that you can do. We've done our study, right? We have three different categories. Totalling six different classifications within those three categories, or I'm sorry, eight different classifications. And then um. It talks a little bit about that if you don't adhere to this bill or you have one or don't have one. Uh, you have to modify it by July first, twenty twenty seven. It expires in ten years. Again, annual report to the state auditor, which can be included in our normal report. To the state auditor from our accountant. And then the league is currently opposing this bill. Because of that. Number one item. And it's still waiting to be introduced to the Senate. So as of now. Doesn't appear to have a lot of traction. But there's a powerful group behind it. Okay?
It just got assigned to Senate.
Did it go past the Senate? Say that again. Okay. Okay. So that's the latest and greatest. It's in the Senate committee. Okay. So, yes.
Well, maybe you'll say this, but I I'm just curious about the the House bill. Um, if I understood it correctly, um, it has a very reasonable. Acknowledgement that you, not every user is the same and that if there are some facilities that are under. Used, we can't simply. Do a flank at one size fits all uh utility fee. I quite like that. I think that's quite fair, but I'm curious to know if. Um, any interested parties have weighed in on that one? Are they just simply opposing it because? Churches are included or do they see that as a reasonable compromise or are they just waiting for this one to?
From what I understand, maybe Isaac can speak more to this. My understanding is the nonprofits that are not. That religious nonprofits, the exemption that they're concerned about. The other bill has classifications too. So an example is Highland City. Where they got in trouble was they just took all their city addresses, looked at their pavement. Uh, condition index and said, okay, we need this amount. So Macy's was paying the same amount on a monthly basis as a single family resident. So that's not fair. Okay? We're we, we're the Cadillac plan. We're the model in in. In the state of Utah. We've done it right. We have three categories with eight different classes. We have three categories with eight different classifications, and we have our own appeal process. And less than five, five have taken us up on that appeal process. Where we've been able to say, yeah, you're right, let's lower that, or they're never gonna come to us and say, let's agree, we're busier than that, right? So, and then finally.
Do you mind a second, uh, would you add anything to that in terms of traction on either of these, Isaac? Up at the Hill, yeah, I it's hard to know, I, we got out of committee and that was fine. House, House against voted for Karen Peterson's bill, the earlier one, last year. So, um, I think there's lots of House support for Karen Peterson's bill and. I don't know what, how much Senate support there is, other than I think it's, I I think we all know it's a, it's a Senate leadership priority. And so, that means a lot.
Yeah, which is, which is their priority.
The Senator Bramble one, the Senate bill. Senate leadership.
Senate leadership is behind that one with with Senator Brammer, so. Okay, so what's his impact to Provo City if that particular bill does get passed and religious organizations with nonprofit status? Um, uh, is exempted, we're talking about ten percent of our transportation utility fee. So over a quarter of a million dollars a year is what it amounts to, um, so there is an impact. It's not a fatal flaw, but it is impacted. So, that is it.
Right, oh, could you go back?
Yes.
That, I I don't, I don't get it. It doesn't.
So here's what we're raising right now, two point seven million based upon our new fee, okay? If all churches, BYU and the NTC, which. These properties and religious properties that are tax-exempt. That totals two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars that we can no longer bill to them. So that's revenue that we'd no longer receive, so subtract it down from two point seven to two point four five.
But shouldn't it also include, I mean, are, didn't the Senate bill also include hospitals?
Nonprofits, other nonprofits.
Religious nonprofits, so there is, it's really targeted.
What possibly could they mean?
Any additional comments or questions?
I just noticed Karen Peterson's district has a a hospital. And she's, you know, in Salt Lake City, so of course, there's university close by. And Brady Brammer says no hospital, no university, so I think there's different, a perspective of people who live in these areas or or uh. Or legislate in these areas, understanding how not being able to collect tax revenue really impacts the bottom line of the city.
Good observation.
And Vern, didn't you say there was a third bill too?
No, so far it's just the two, just the two bills, uh, the third one I was gonna talk about is the impact. If Senate Bill three-ten passes, okay, or whatever number it was, so.
And Malia, this just got assigned to committee then?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have to be hurt if we have to pass it through the House.
What are the odds that they both pass?
Well, there'll be reconciliation between the House and the Senate, that's it, how it usually works. And so someone's gonna have to.
Give and take.
They're gonna have to.
How do you compromise on that one?
I don't know.
Maybe we just assume that Brammers is gonna be going through last night kind of thing, and it will probably be successful. We're not.
I don't think we know, I I don't, and and even if it does, again. Unless, unless the House approves the Senate bill, the Senate bill is not law, so.
Is there something we can do to support Peterson?
The league is not yet calling on people to activate the way they sometimes do, so they're still keeping an eye on that. See, but we're trying to support as we can, I went to the committee hearing where she presented, and so. Keep doing what can, following the league's lead.
So we'll be back, uh, March twenty-fifth, I think, is the council meeting, that we wanna be back to. Report back on the study and show you all the data and information about our transportation utility fee update. Um, so we're excited to share that information with you.
Yes, Malia.
The Senate bill is in committees for, at nine AM. Yeah, three-ten.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Malia, thank you, Vern, appreciate the update, this is very helpful. The municipal council will now consider a motion to close the meeting.
Let's make a motion to close meeting.
Motion by Counselor McKay to close the meeting. Second by.
And did you get to revise version of that?
Yeah.
Switching back and forth, okay, so there's, so there are two items. Um, we've discussed in council closed meeting. Both of them have to do with character and competence of an individual, which is one of my reasons for closing.
Okay, and so we have a motion by Counselor McKay, second by Counselor Christensen. Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yeah.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, Counselor Hanlon?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Bush.
Yep.
Will now recess the council meeting. If there's no objection, we will recess as the council and reconvene as the governing board of redevelopment agency. After RDA, we will reconvene as the council and re-function rubric for the closed meeting.
Hey, the RDA governing board will now consider a motion to close its meeting, Brian?
Oh, there's also a topic for closed meetings for the RDA governing board that also involves character and competence. Competence of an individual which is in a.
Hey, do we have a motion to close the RDA meeting?
Take a motion for the RDA.
Oh, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, let's have a vote. Portner Verhoven?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Yes.
Garrett? Hamley?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
And Whipple, is it yes? Okay, if there is no objection, oh, that was seven-zero. If there's no objection, we will now recess the RDA governing board. After the conclusion of the council closed meeting, we will reconvene as the RDA closed meeting.